Before we start.
One second.
Maxine Berman passed away. Could we have a moment of silence?
Sure.
She lives in the state that for us, 14 years ago, she passed away.
A moment of silence for Ms. Berman. Thank you. Real call, please.
Cruz, Prassey, Frazier.
Here.
Morris here. Taylor here.
Madam.
Here.
Bridwell.
Here.
Mr. President, have a call.
First item of the business would be the appointment of Deputy City Clerk.
The Council just in accordance with 5.9, Section 5.9 of the city charter. Tonight, I'm pleased to submit my person for Deputy City Clerk, Nicole Galloway James, looking for your confirmation this evening. Ms. Galloway is very qualified for this position. She holds a bachelor's degree and a law degree. As I organize the office of the city clerk, I do do that on best practices, and I think personality-wise and leadership-wise and academia and experience acumen, she is the best fit for us. And moving forward, she has a multitude of experience, both in the private and the public sector, and the items where what would be my weaknesses is her strengths, and it's about building a team and being most efficient in the best manner to the public. So that's how I assembled this pick, and I think that it'll take our office to the next level. So tonight, I'm actually asking for Rule 10 for council, and Ms. Galloway is actually here tonight, so we can entertain any questions as well.
Okay. Ms. Galloway, please come down, please. Counsel, questions coming?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the same question that I asked, so don't feel like that, but what percentage of the max is this salary?
The maximum salary for this position is $86,000. I started at $68,000 to $68 to $86,000, so we're on the low end, as far as starting out at $72,000 and going up to 5% after six months. So what we did is in accordance with the mid-level management from HR of the other deputies that started, we went on that same line base. The last deputy that was hired here, I believe, was a Deputy City Assessor, and it's that same type of equation that was used per the recommendation of HR.
Okay.
Ms. Morris.
Ms. Galloway James, anything that you'd like to share with us in terms of your position at the institution?
I am very grateful. Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm very grateful for Ms. Hawkins to see me as a great fit for this position. I have a daughter who is in Southfield Public School. I have lived in Southfield since 2004, and I want to see this community change, and I want to make sure that the voters in this community are informed regarding what's going on in their city, and what is going to be on their ballots, and I'm hoping to be able to help in any way, shape, or form that I can. That's what I'm here to do. I'm here to help.
Ms. Frazier.
You have a law degree?
Yes, sir.
Did you take the bar?
I took it one time in order to graduate. The school I went to said you had to take the bar to graduate. During my law school, I was pregnant with my daughter, and I had some complications. And to be quite honest, the doctor said, "She was law fam." I made the choice as head.
It was a good choice. It was a good choice. We have enough people in law school to make our, help us keep our life straight. Thank you.
Ms. Fokasi. Do we have a resume that just to let her discover?
I can get that.
Something that's, you should get it when you have a person to report.
Mr. President, I find that an immediate need to act.
Will support that?
We have an immediate need to act. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have it.
Mr. President.
This is Ms. Frazier.
I move that we approve the clerk's recommendation for Assistant City Clerk. Yes. And vote for a positive outcome.
Support.
The move on Ms. Frazier, support on this, Taylor, that we approve the appointment of the Deputy City Clerk as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So be it. Yes, ma'am.
They will go.
Mr. President, I also have another suggestion, and that is at our next regular meeting, Chief P. Green. Chief P. Green introduced.
Congratulations.
You're gonna probably swear in before the 19th, right? She started.
Why don't you do it now, like we did the person. Yeah.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
That's Dan.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Okay. Couple of House, Mr. Frazier, did you want to, you were in a little comment.
No, I just said that I think this is an important enough decision that we need to have, have a next regular meeting, so that the community knows that we do have a Deputy City Clerk.
Okay. So know that, Mrs. Clerk, okay, all right, you were swearing in at that particular, when you proposed the swearing in?
That morning, so she was physically already sworn in, was her first appointment, but we can definitely introduce her so the community can join that meeting.
Okay. All right. With respect to the agenda, the couple of House cleaning items. Item number four will move to item number two. I will add, we're moving item number four, Street Improvement Fund, Second Series of Issuance, to the next item on the agenda, item number two. I will also add item five, which will be the update of the 60th Anniversary Celebration. And item number six, we're still with Robert Rules of Order comments, Observation by Our Clerk. So, all right, with that, we will now have item number two, presentation, item number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have with Steve Frank from Miller Canfield, as well as Kerry Blanchett from PM Financial Services. In November 2014, the Southfield Voters approved a $99 million Street Improvement Fund, proposed to reconstruct and maintain and repair local major roads around the city. The first series of bonds was issued in February 2015 in the amount of $43 million. We are now at the point where we're requesting city council's authorization to execute a bond that will allow us to do the second series of that work in the amount of $32 million. We have all mine the proposed tentative work for 2018, 19, and '20. In my communication to you, we are also, if the administration's also requesting an immediate need to act, we can have the move forward on these street bonds. If there are any questions that council has, Mr. Frank and Ms. Blanchett are both here. This was presented at last Friday Finance Committee meeting. Ms. Councilwoman Chairwoman Taylor and Mr. Frazier were both in attendance at that meeting.
Counsel?
Yeah.
The list of items that are going to be addressed 2018, they, I guess, we're building a lot of roads, new roads, but our city roads are not taken care of. In other words, we have a bond going out, and I'd rather see less new roads and catch up with some of the other roads, like Nine Mile Road, I see that's where the bridge is, but we're not talking about Nine Mile Road between Berg and Telegraph Road, which you can't even drive on, and the other streets the same way. In other words, we used to have a crack and seal, and we used to go throughout the city and fill all the cracks and seal everything, so the water doesn't go down and expose the underground and blow them up, and we haven't done that in years.
That's not correct. We have, we do operate.
Well, we don't do enough. We don't do enough then.
That may be a fair statement.
I have a smid roll in my place that I've never seen.
We've reinstituted that program. I will get those information, but we do have a crack and seal.
I understand it's six years.
I could, I'll speak for the last few years. I know we have had a very aggressive crack and seal, and with the new legislation that was passed by the state, if you recall, Southfield's amount was increased to about $3.1 million for $1.1 million in staffing and bringing our staffing levels back to public works, but the other part of that $2 million was we did reactivate the crack and seal program. So, and I can get those exact numbers for the last few years.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a audit on just the roads and what we're spending on the roads, and so I could see how much we're spending on neglected roads. I call them neglected because, boy, I'll tell you, if something's wrong, I don't invent here, but, you know, something's wrong with our inspection, you can go down these streets, and where we have cut and put in new cement, on the whole street, the only thing that is broken up in some places is that new, brand-new cement that we put where there was prior to it, a cobble, and the whole top looks like it returned back to gravel. And you see that all over the city, where we've cut and put cement in, and it is not holding up. So I, I mean, I just am concerned about where we're spending our money on roads. I don't know if we're gonna get anything from the state, and when they turn $75,000, they're talking about, you know, when they go to the state and the county, and we get the leftovers, how much that even comes down to us. But I just think that we've got to research all our roads and see what's the best way to approach it and pay for. I gave John some, a schooling I had some 40 years ago, I guess, maybe longer than that, and it talks about what happens when we have these cracks in our roads, and how the water goes down, and it takes the first, right, I said the second, third, and fourth. I talked to you about it this morning. And then you get, when you get a hole, then you get the cars getting in, now you get swell, right, and it just breaks in, now you have a bigger hole. And so, it's so important to do the maintenance. I don't, I know these roads are not ours, a lot of them, and get a lot of questions on them, but, you know, I just, I just think that we've gotta get the roads that we own back in shape and drivable. And I don't know any way else to put it, but I'm not for spending any money, I just, you know, when the state comes through, I put assistance to that, and then county committee participates in that. In the meantime, our roads are not, you know, where we are 100% funding them, or if we get a grant for them, you know, we're way behind in taking care of them. And what really gets me is Nine Mile Road, even the one that we did between Southfield Road and Greenfield is already marbled, and it's already, Evergreen Road is already broken up, it just was done last fall. And something's happening with this, and, you know, this is a lot of money to be spending without getting good work, and get these jobs done properly, so we don't have to go back over them and bring the people back. I just think that we need some kind of attention to it. I don't know what it is. I think I'd like to have a meeting just on roads itself. Is it coming up?
Go ahead, Mr. Frazier.
It's a desire of the collective council, we're happy to have a meeting on roads in entirety. I remind council, 2008, we started the Pacer rating, and we've done that rating every two years. We now do a rating every two years for our bridges, our underpinnings on our bridges, as well as our scouring. Those reports are now submitted to the state, with the legislation that was passed five years ago, that was not a requirement. We were one of the first cities in the state to embrace the Pacer rating, so that is now the state standard. And if you recall, we said this, this is a 10-year plan. Some roads are gonna get better, are gonna get worse before they get better, because if you recall, you know, the concept is a little bit of preventive maintenance goes along with it. I agree with you on crack sealing, we are doing our city streets. Oakland County's not doing theirs, neither is the state, and they will tell you that the money's simply not there. I'll share with you, and part of this work, in the next few years, this will leverage another $10.9 million in federal aid, is what's anticipated in this. As we go through our road modeling and make sure that we're at the full level of what was committed to us in the, was that November of '15 legislation? And if you remember, the legislature said, "Oh, we passed the law, but we're not gonna start collecting the fees, the 2017." So you're just starting to see where we're gonna have the full benefit of that money. My other statement is of the $100 million, according to issuing municipal league, our estimate is $540,000. Someone else's estimate is $570,000. A half million dollars doesn't do much of a new construction road, but on a mill in a lot of our residential streets, a road that doesn't have curve or gutter, that has mill and is crowned properly, we can actually do quite a bit of road with that kind of money. And we're happy.
I hear you, but I'm not getting my answer. We've gotta have a meeting just on roads, and what we're gonna do about all these roads that need fixing and...
And this is the plan we embarked on three years ago when we put this together.
I think we can arrange to have a meeting specifically on roads, and it could be before council, and we can work out a date. But let's just go ahead and, is council, a question by council on this particular item?
Yes. Which, Madam?
I know that Section 24 has in here the safer offices of school. Were there, wasn't that also scheduled for full road?
Yeah, the Section 24, 25 financing is tied to water shore financing, that will be a second type of financing. Right now, we have Plan Moran going through our rate structure, but that's a larger project, and that is actually the first column that you'll see. Safe offices of schools is part of Section 18, for $881,000, with outside funding of $600,000 coming in.
Right. Okay. Because I saw that, I didn't know if that was, if that included the streets.
Mr. Mayor?
Just to clarify, because it doesn't say it, under 2018 Nine Mile Road, that's actually from Lasher to Telegraph, besides the bridge. It just says Nine Mile. Would it be more specific?
I just asked that, Mr. Mayor. And that wasn't answered.
Well, it's not written down that way, but that.
Well, it says, it says we have Nine Mile Road.
That's why I spoke up.
Yeah, well, Nine Mile Road goes from Greenfield all the way to Hexton, you know? And I'm just saying is that that road, between Lasher Road and Telegraph.
It's terrible.
You can't even drive on it.
And that's definitely Lasher's.
Well, I'd like to have those things clarified, and make sure that we're talking about what's gonna be done.
These streets that have been proposed here, are these just proposed, or are there, is there variance in here?
These actually are, in the 2018, our engineers ready to go. We have outside funding. Keep in mind that that federal aid committee process begins almost three years out, so for example, right now, we're gonna do the federal aid committee for 2021, so you're constantly looking forward.
Is there some room for adjustment in 2019 and 2020?
There possibly is, especially as we get our hands around the, if we're receiving that fold of $3.1 million, there's about $2 million a year that can be moved, and I think there's some movement. The movement that you have the most difficulty with is on your federal aid contracts, because you're, the state is under pressure, you spend so much money with each of those contracts.
If I could, just to add a little more, because this is all part of the state of city address that we're gonna be doing shortly. We have over $8 million in grant money tied to specific 2018 projects. Overall, what's here represents $30.3 million in road construction. So we're still, we're up to about, with other funds now for the four, this will be the fourth year of this aggressive program, we're at about $99 million in road construction. I think it's very important to mention that, because people just see the potholes, and yet there's been an awful lot of work done, and more is coming, and as Councilman Fokasi likes to point out, one mile of cement is a million, one lane mile of cement is a million dollars. So it just goes very, very quickly, but again, because the Lee and Engineering Department was very aggressive about going after grant money, we've had over $8 million in outside money to stretch our own bond dollars, and some of the stuff that I know was done in 2019 is also tied to grant.
If you backed $600,000, which is a different federal grant program, the Transportation Enhancement Program, we probably walked off with about 40% of the federal aid county wire. I will tell you, if you look at Southfield's score, kind of the last four years, we picked up the majority of the federal aid. Midtown, there's been a lot of frustration, the two cities that have been in the strongest position, because they've been able to come and channel the local resources, are Southfield and Ram Oak, and that's all because they have a village supporting these activities.
Well, I think it's supportive, we need the council meeting on the roads.
Let's not forget that in Oakland County, Southfield will repair more roads and rejuvenate more roads than anybody else in the county. And so, but it will be, we will put it on the calendar, the council will be on roads only, and we, the staff will be there to answer specific questions, and whatever, you know, whatever comes up. But let's continue to be mindful that we are spending an awful lot of money on the roads, and our roads were bad, and they'll be bad until we get to the, and I sat in on the homeowners meeting for the Nine Mile, Lasher to Telegraph, and there were very austerous and facetious homeowners' meeting about that, and so, we are, I don't wanna think about engineers, but I know we are doing our part to clean that up, and to replace that bridge.
Bridge replacement, Councilman Fokasi's right about maintenance, the ceiling, they don't go a long way. We've reactivated the program, we'll continue to do that, and then the, this is, the next three years, you'll see your pacing rating, your score actually turned the table to that rating, and here in that low C, now we're pushing into high C, low P, and then you can go through that in that rating. I'm gonna tell you, is it a perfect rating system? Probably not, but it's developed by Wisconsin, Indiana, Illinois, and Ohio. I wish I had the funding level of Ohio, we're spending a billion dollar more a year than the state of Michigan is. That's not part of it. I was recently asked, is there a difference between Michigan's road construction standards and Ohio or Wisconsin? The answer is no. If you've got federal aid tied to that road, it is the same material construction standard.
All righty. Mr. Frazier.
Yeah. Does this proposal include what happened at the federal level about flipping the percentage of involvement with, you know, we used to get 80% from the federal, and we put in 20%, now they flipped it around?
I don't, I know they're talking about that, I don't, but that would apply to future contracts. I don't know if they would try to be that retroactive. That would be a real surprise, but anything's possible with the federal government. But these are commitments that we have, through the federal aid, as the president takes through a transportation bill, that everything I've seen is yet, has not been fully defined, it's very murky, I don't believe, you know, at least for the, I'm gonna sit, go out on a limb and say I would be surprised for 2018, but anything in the future is possible. I will remind you, there happened some good things. A few years ago, we had to come to the table with the local match for Southfield Road and the 696, the legislation in Michigan, we no longer have to come, the local match, I-75, and the amount of work that's gonna be done on I-696 this summer, we don't have to come to the match on that, which, if you recall some of that dialogue, city like Madison Heights, their entire road budget would have been used to provide the local match on a federal interstate. So that's almost contrary to what the president's proposing. At the state level, they've done almost the exact opposite.
Okay. Another question, and that is, and I wanna call it slurry, but it's something different than that. And that's what we did to rehab Greenview off of Nine Mile, called Southfield Nine Mile dump by, the school. Do we still use that? I mean, we, I think it was almost like a trial on that road?
I don't believe we are, but I will put that question when we have engineers coming in. We're trying to obviously, a mill, and get at least a four-and-a-half inch wear course on it, so you have your leveling course and then your wearing course. We did a couple of things, the capes, there were a couple of things that were thinner layers, but they bought us time.
That road has held up surprisingly well.
Drainage is constantly, keep the water off the road, keep it dry and tight, it don't come down to drainage.
Yeah, well, that road does have a high ground up, and ditches. The other thing, and I sort of agree with Mr. Fokasi about the Pacer program, and what you said, it's not a perfect system, and the perfect system, I mean, the reason it's not a perfect system, or close to it, is when a road gets to the D level, then they just turn your back on that, because it's as bad as it's gonna be, and those are the roads that I think that Mr. Fokasi's talking about, the ones that are at D level, you just sort of walk away, and they get potholes, and they get worse, and they get worse, until at some point in time, you know, when somebody loses a small car, and you go on and fix it.
And that's happening.
Yep.
Should that be in the idea?
Some or another, we need to.
They were the Subaru.
Need to evaluate the Class D roads or something.
We used to have a dirt patch program. Do we have that anymore? Do we go away with that, with this, all this construction?
So we still use the dirt patch, however, we're putting greater emphasis on hot patch. If you recall, council allowed us to buy three hot patch boxes, and we get a much better job with a hot patch than we do a dirt patch. We know that we can use temporary repairs if we go in and properly clean. clean it up, and then put it in. Right now, it's time to use a pothole patching. We go in, and I'll remind you, um, three years ago, I, we had, um, 198 hours, 198 years of collective experience. Today, with the turnover of public works, I'm, we're down to 21. We are actually running a class on how to fill potholes. You know, just the conversation on Saturday with Larry was, you know, chuck and toss, you put any, any pad. Potholes are real frustrating for me, because every time I see it go in, eventually a good rain, it comes out, we end up having to sweep the stuff up, it clogs our sewers, we end up having a vector, and all of that has to be just totally taken as an additive material. So, obviously, that's another reason speaking to a good, solid quality maintenance, keeping the, uh, garbage, the, uh, the asphalt, the wasted asphalt out. So anytime we get a good, clean pad, it's better.
So it seems though that with all the emergency repairs being had around the area, they open, they open some of the asphalt factories. Is there a way that we can, in Southfield, do some hot patching now rather than wait?
We are, that's what these boxes are allowing us to do.
We're doing it now?
We're putting down sub-hot patch material when we can get the material.
It has to be set temperature though, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But, a couple of weeks ago, we had, a couple of weeks ago, we had that 40, and that was...
Okay.
All right. I think, um, there's a very robust conversation here about roads. So when we do have that meeting about roads, you know, we can get a lot of these detailed, um, ironed out. But this particular item came to us as a immediate need to add, just then.
And as we do, we do have the, the bond resolution, as prepared by Brother Canfield is here. Carrie, I think you can both answer questions regarding the issuance of the bond and the terms of the next steps, if Council has any questions.
I'd use it my immediate need to add quarter of the year. I'm a routine.
Support.
It's been ruled by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Manabon, that we have a rule 10 of this particular item. All in favor?
Aye.
Support of this decision?
Street Improvement Bond?
Support.
It's been ruled by Mr. Cruz, and supported by Mr. Martin, that we approved the Street Improvement Bond, second series issuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved that we move into the, uh, Street Improvement Bond, the second series of issuance.
Mr. Chair, my question includes having a meeting on roads.
Yes, we, we definitely, I will, I will get with this work, and everybody is needed to be here to schedule this particular meeting. And more than like, well, that, that item is approved, but more than likely, I will call, try to get that meeting an hour before our regular scheduled, um, Monday meeting, so we try to get everybody here, and everything with that. It'll be fairly soon. Okay, alrighty.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, we will now go on to item number three, presentation or discussion regarding the hold zoning on it. Special use requests, Glassman, new, used vehicle sales.
Yes, thank you, good evening, Council, Mayor Cybert, administration. We have one particular project for you. It actually has three parts to it. It is a rezoning request, special land use, and a site plan review request. The site plan review request did vote before the site plan committee before this meeting. What I'll be presenting to you tonight, along with the petitioner and Mr. Glassman, who is now the owner of this property, will be the proposed rezoning and special land use. The property in question is the old Toys R Us building, which is down here on the corner of Northwestern Highway and Telegraph Road, east side of the street. The Glassman property is directly to the north of this. Uh, the proposal from a rezoning standpoint is this little section of B3 that is currently on the property. Uh, the property itself is outlined here in the darker line. We have both RS, Regional Shopping, on the property in B3. It's all RS to the north. Now, the proposal is to take this little sliver of B3, rezone that to RS Regional Shopping, try to clean it up. So that is the rezoning portion, it's 0.71 acres of land. Uh, the entire property in itself is 3.94. So we'd be looking again just to rezone 0.71 acres from B3 to RS Regional Shopping. The special use portion is to allow the use of the property itself for a new used vehicle dealership, as well as storage on the property. This is the proposed site plan that has been submitted. It does provide for the proper amount of parking spaces on the site. 56 parking spaces are required, based upon the use of the property, along with the balance of the property being used for, for vehicle storage, and then new and used vehicle sales. I'll just kind of flip through this just for a moment, to show you what the interior of the property, the proposal there, is for sales and delivery, office, inventory and vehicle storage on the inside, as well as the vehicle prep. I'll move back to the elevation portion. One of the issues, one of the main issues, uh, that staff and the planning commission had in going through this project, was what the exterior of the building would end up being. This is the proposal from the architect, and Mr. Glassman, is to paint the exterior of the building this gray color, and then the balance of the building in itself would be painted white. One of the issues, the concerns that staff had, was, can we do something more with the building than just a paint job? Uh, we don't know how long this building will be used as it is right now. And there's a concern of, especially going up and down Telegraph Road, that this building would look less and less like an old Toys R Us building, but more and more like a dealership type of use. But again, based upon what was submitted to us, it is a paint job right now, and both Mr. Dorchen and Mr. Glassman have kind of made their case as to why they have planned just on a paint job at this, at this point. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to them, just to kind of explain, again, the project, and then, why just a paint job versus more work on the property.
Good evening, all. My name is Sam Dorchen, Dorchen Martin Associates, 29895 Greenfield in Southfield. I'd like to give you an overall idea and picture of, of this particular project as it relates to the entire area. And if, if you can get me a little bit more. I'll try to talk louder enough. This is the site in question. Since 1969, the Glassman family has owned this site, and developed it, and maintained it. As, uh, through the years, uh, it has grown from, and I'll draw out some names that you may recall. Oldsmobile, uh, is, is one. Job was once here, and is now gone. When this, when the Toys R Us site became available, and, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Glassman explain it a little bit further. But it seemed like, uh, to protect his site, and to keep this as a very homogeneous kind of feeling, with all of the automotive dealerships in, in the area, this would be a natural facility for him. And, uh, the adjacent sites would be a little affected by what has happened or with the purchase and the development of the Toys R Us building into a, a new dealership. Uh, at the current time, we're, we're talking about it being a new and used car facility. There would be some additional development naturally, as, as time went on. But the idea at, at this time is to make it usable. I, I think it may be a little demeaning saying that only painting is, is what, uh, what is proposed. There will be repairs to bring it up to date. Painting is naturally a temporary thing, because in the future, there will be new development of this building. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Glassman, and let him explain further.
Thank you, Sam. George Glassman, 28,000 Telegraph Road, Southfield. Thank you all, I appreciate it. Uh, the parcel that was, that was acquired was done so in the hopes of expanding our current operation. Uh, we've got applications into a number of franchises currently. That process is not something that happens overnight. The hope and the goal is to acquire an additional new car franchise. The reason for currently, um, cleaning the facility up as opposed to a complete overhaul is that each manufacturer has very, very specific requirements as to how it needs to be. So for example, today, all Chevrolet dealerships look the same, all Subaru dealerships look the same, all Hyundai and Kia dealerships look the same. And so, um, the new franchise that we're hoping to be awarded, and again, we do have applications into a couple right now, and, um, because of the visibility and, and the fact that Telegraph Road is so appealing to, um, all the manufacturers, I'm confident that we'll be successful in, in getting one of those. At which time, they'll dictate, subject to city approval, of course, how they want that building to look. And, um, it may very well involve the complete demolition of the building. So, the concern I've got right now is spending a tremendous amount of money, which we're always spending a fair amount, in terms of making sure that the electrical, the pavement, the sidewalk, everything is, is up to snuff, to meet the city's needs, as well as our own. I don't want to have that property be in a situation in which it would create any type of nuisance or problem for any of the visitors to come onto the property. And again, because it's somewhat of a transition right now, that's the reason why I'm not going full bore into completely renovating the building. We are still going to be spending a significant amount of money, both interior and exterior too, so that our patrons will be loving.
Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Glassman, uh, I'm curious about something, because what I'm hearing from other auto dealers on Telegraph Road, it seems like the manufacturers are expecting the dealers to put more and more, rather than them store inventory, they're expecting you to do it. Is that correct? I mean, that's kind of what I'm picking up.
I haven't run into that. I mean, the, the, the inventory needs as, as they are currently, um, you know, as we need vehicles, obviously, you know, they're ordered, and we do what we can in terms of storage. I also have a, um, our body shop, our collision centers on Nine Mile Road. So we don't have a problem should there be excess inventory, that's the concern. But all I can say is that, I, I certainly wouldn't want to have more inventory than I can sell. That would obviously not be financially responsible. But in terms of that supply and demand, there are times in the year certainly when, um, there's more inventory than less inventory, but it fluctuates. In terms of what the manufacturers do, it's similar to, um, some government agencies in which you don't know what they're doing today or tomorrow, and then, everything's certain until it's not.
Mr. Ficassi, I think this, this went before site plan earlier today.
Mr. Ficassi?
This came before the site plan committee, and, uh, and, uh, there were three votes for it. It was brought up, the same type of thing that Jeff brought up, the, uh, the looks of the building, meaning the painting of it, and one other item was landscaping, so that at least that all the foliage would look nice and, uh, and green. And the other point it was raised, that there's a little group of buildings that are between, just east of this building, and, you know, there's big investment coming from that office building that's up to the top there, and, and they're working on reciprocal parking in probably just south of that. And then you've got Copper Canyon, and you've got the new Korean restaurant and grocery store. I, I did mention to Mr. Glassman that these people have put like six and a half billion dollars to, to fix up that, uh, that restaurant and building that does the grocery store there. And the office people, I guess, are going to do something, because they met with Shelley to make sure that they have reciprocal parking on that piece that you see where there's parking. They just wanted this to reflect, the Glassman property to look nice, so that the other ones are brought up to speed and become more part of Southfield. It seemed like it's a little rundown, that whole little area there with Copper Canyon, the office, and, and the, uh, and the Korean place, but we're getting some action there for sure on the restaurant, and probability on the offices. And I don't know what's going to happen to the Copper Canyon, but hopefully that thing will disappear or be fixed up to make that little area nice. The neighbors, during the consent meeting, were very concerned about, the, the, the residents up to the north of that, north east of that, very concerned about this piece, because in the wintertime, they see it. Summertime, there's growth, and you don't get to see this area. But, um, they're very concerned, and they were the ones that had the consent, because the original plan for this was a high-rise apartment complex. And they fought it in order to make sure that it wasn't adverse to their neighborhood. And maintaining this piece, even though it's dumpy, you know, it still looks dumpy to them. And I think this Glassman thing will be, in addition to a good start, and so will the restaurant. We're keeping it up and bringing it up to speed. Bring them on the, the stage.
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, um, why is this 27,000 Telegraph Road? Because when we were talking about New Soul Garden, and the confusion about whether it's Eleven Mile Road, Northwestern Highway, or whatever, and we decided to put a wayfinding sign at the turn-in that said Northwestern Highway, uh, now this is Telegraph Road. It seems to me that it's going to cause more confusion, because someone that's not familiar with this area, if they're looking for 27,000 Telegraph Road, and they get to the turnoff and it says, the sign that says Northwestern Highway this way, uh, they, you know...
I can answer that. The restaurant asked that, that be all one road, like Eleven Mile Road, all the way from Hoshier going west.
Yeah, it ought to be, it ought to be one road.
So it's Telegraph. And, and, and some of the existing buildings there, you know, want to change. Sherzettic is a Bell Road address, it isn't either one of Eleven or Northwestern. So they're separate. But the other ones that are next to it, the hotel and, and Plant Moran, they don't want to change because of their address for the corporation, so...
Well, yeah, they're not Telegraph either. They're not Telegraph, but this building is Telegraph.
No, but if you make it all Eleven Mile Road, and you have an arrow coming that way...
That's what I'm asking, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, that we have less confusion by naming it all the same thing.
Yeah.
Didn't this come up a couple of months ago, when the restaurant was...
Yeah, right. And we decided to put a wayfinding sign, so that people that were either coming down Northwestern Highway and saw the restaurant, and got off on Telegraph Road, would know how to get back there. Because I can see people having the same problem, getting to... Because I can see people having the same problem getting to your place if they aren't familiar with how to make the turn-in to get back to it.
Try to Google it, then you get really screwed up.
I was going to say, in this case, it's a little less problematic for us because it'll be essentially a continuation of our existing business.
Okay.
It'll just be an expansion of what we're already doing.
Mr. Morris.
Mr. Glassman, can you share with the council your immediate desire for the signage that you shared with us at site plan, just so that, because that will also help with the street planning.
I wish I was smart enough to tell you an answer other than we've been 28,000 Telegraph for...
No, I mean the large sign.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. At the moment, until I know what franchise it would be, with Mr. Gardell's assistance, I'd be looking to probably just have it say Glassman, maybe Glassman Automotive between now and the time of that another franchise is acquired. But I absolutely would be in favor of and would appreciate any approval you'd give for that sign to be changed tomorrow. I'd be more than happy to take care of that. I don't want it to be Toys R Us, I'd like people to say the Glassman property, not the Toys R Us. It's been an eyesore for me, and that's the reason why it was acquired. Even in the last several years of existence as a Toys R Us facility, it was an eyesore and it did nothing to add to the community. I can assure you that whatever we're doing now and whatever we plan to do in the future will be an extension of what we've done for the last almost 50 years, and I look forward to that opportunity.
How about Glassman or Toys R Us?
You can start by buying all the cars, that'd be great.
Mr. Cruz.
I was wondering if you could share with us which franchise you apply for at this time. Can you share with us?
Short of saying that Genesis, which is going to be the offshoot of the Hyundai luxury brand, that would be one. The others, I basically have a confidentiality relative to that. Otherwise, I'd be more than happy to tell you.
All right, counsel, this was a presentation and discussion.
Is that for March?
Oh, it's the 26th.
Yeah, and if I may through the chair, this item would come back to counsel for special use of the rezoning and the site plan at your March 26 meeting.
Okay.
That's your regulation.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. This item would be number four, the presentation of the proposed ordinance amendments.
I have five distinct ordinance amendments. They all kind of came together at the same time, and so I thought it made sense to try to get them all on the same agenda and we'll go through them. Probably the one that is most comprehensive and is different than what we've had is the first one, and that's the amendment to Chapter 105. Currently, Chapter 105 of the code is a registration requirement for apartment communities. So that was enacted by counsel a few years back, and what it was designed to do at least is to let the city know, you know, who are the owners of these complexes, who are the contact persons, how do we get in contact with you if there's an issue, and that's kind of where we left it. The amendment now to Chapter 105 includes and brings that forward, the registration, but it now adds on the inspection. And so, these are the kind of things that we've talked about for quite a number of years and probably exacerbated by what we've seen at the Sapphire. So, in essence, if we kind of skip past the registration because really not much is ever changed, and we get to inspection, which really starts on page four, once now a apartment complex, a multiple-family complex comes in to register, and we'll be, and Mark or Ed or Diane can talk about even the registration process, but once they come in to register, then we will schedule an inspection. And the route that we've kind of gone in speaking with legislative committee over this a few instances is that there ought to be all the common areas clearly and some percentage of the dwelling units. We know that we have a lot of apartment units in the city, and if the intent was to really go in and look at every single one of them every year, that's probably almost just not something that we could undertake. The theory is if we go in and we look at a certain percentage on some kind of random basis, random also, you know, looking at what would make it a sampling, appropriate sampling, but if we go in and we look at a certain percentage and those units either, you know, look good, no violation, that's probably a good indication that the remainder is in that same condition. Similarly, if you go in and look at that certain percentage and a lot of violations, you can probably assume that the rest of the building is in that condition. So kind of what we settled on with legislative committee to bring to the full council was every year, there will be an annual inspection of all the common areas, and we've defined that, so that includes all the lobbies and the mechanical rooms and your typical, you have your common restrooms, and then 20% of all the units in the building. And that'll be determined, you know, how those get selected will be through a determination that building department will make. So they will go in there, they'll inspect the 20 units, the 20%, and along with the ordinance, you saw a draft of what their requirements, what are they looking for? And so, this is actually what Mark and Diane put together, the list of what they're going to be looking for, what codes they're looking for in particular. This will be available to all the apartment complex owners, so they'll know when the inspections are scheduled, this is what we'll be looking for. And that's required by the ordinance as well, just to provide an adequate notice to the owners. So we'll go in, we'll do those inspections. The ordinance further provides if more than 50% of the units show violations, then the building department has the right to go through and look at a lot more, up to 100%. That'll be, again, a determination that they'll make based on what they saw. If more than 80% have no violations, then instead of us coming back next year, so a building is showing less than, you know, a 20% of those units have problems, then the certificate that we give will be good for three years. So, there's an incentive there for an apartment owner to keep everything in good shape because if we come in and 80% of the 20% have no violations, you know, you forced all us for three years now. Now, that's always subject to, annual or three years is always going to be subject to a section of the ordinance that says, "But we reserve the right to go in at any time." So just because we said it's annual or three years, if we get a complaint, then we'll go in. If we find out through some, you know, some other source that there's some health hazards or issues, we're going to go back for inspection. So that's built into the ordinance as well. The other issue that I think came up through legislative was, you know, what if a tenant refuses to let us in? The ordinance provides, and this is consistent with where the state law goes on this, if a tenant says, "No, I'm not letting you in," and that happens to be one of the units that has been scheduled for inspection, we have to get a search warrant before we can go in. And again, not an impediment to us. We do search warrants all the time, building department does search warrants, codes do them, so, you know, it's not a real problem for us. It'll just come through our office, we'll get before a magistrate or a judge, we'll get a search warrant, can do it the same day typically, and then we'll go out and we'll have a valid lead issued, search warrant, and we've made sure that we comply with the law. Schedule of fees, so the building department and I believe it is attached to the attachment that came from building, so that the goal here is that this program will pay for itself through the fees that will be generated as a result of these inspections. A violation will be a civil infraction, and so that ticket will be written and will be processed through court. And there is a provision also that if we, if when building goes in for any reason, be it an annual inspection, every three-year inspection, a complaint, whatever, and we find a health hazard, that there's a serious threat to the public health, safety and welfare, that the building department does have the right to order that either that unit or the entire building, if that's what they determine, would be vacated. And that is a situation really that they already have in the codes, and so if they make that determination, and again, I don't think it's something that, you know, they would take lightly, but if they go in there and there's no water, or there's, you know, safety and health issues, they have the right to order that that unit or the entire building, if that's the case, be vacated until those issues are addressed and resolved.
All right, I want to take each one of these individually, so they can get that through, to look at.
So, the changes to the ordinance, do you anticipate we'll be needing to hire more staff?
I guess that'll be Mark.
Mark Pilot, building department. Yes, we've discussed this with Fred. We're probably looking at two housing inspectors, and for this program, one assistant administrative staff person.
Mr. Focaccia?
Yes, that's it for them.
Okay. Mr. Flyer.
To the city attorney, would this proposed ordinance apply to buildings that come under HUD and VISTDA guidelines that have to do with REACT inspections? They have all kinds of things that in order to keep the rent subsidies, they go through very, very thorough filings.
Right. We've exempted them as long as they have had the inspection and they show that they have it and they comply with those inspections.
Yeah, my point is they wouldn't even double...
Correct.
Because they're doing it now and they're doing it already.
Correct. And I think that everyone's comfortable with the level of those inspections as well, but we would want to make sure that they actually did receive their inspections and that they had, you know, they were certified. So yes, it would be exempted though, in that instance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I meant to ask, with the fees, are they going to cover the cost of the new staff?
Yeah, that's...
We've done an analysis of staff and the cost of doing inspection, including vehicles and all of that, and we're looking at probably scenario two as our benchmark. We're still working with some additional fees, but scenario two on the informational draft for fees is probably what we're looking at.
Mr. Madam.
Do you not actually know what those fees are going to be? Are there the regular fee schedule for rental ordinance, for the rental registration?
Currently, in the fee, there was a council resolution for the registration of $100. When we redid the fee schedule, we did insert a new registration fee of $125 because they do have staff time and data entry time.
Right.
But for the inspection fees, we're probably looking at this type of fee based on areas within the building. We will have to have a separate fee schedule for the apartments, but re-inspections, if you'll note, is at $50 each, that is part of our current fee schedule also.
Okay.
But we're looking at scenario two as our benchmark for the fees.
All right. And then, reading through some of this, if the city's not going to notify the tenants, that would be the building manager, who's going to determine which apartments are being looked at?
When we register the properties, we'll end up getting a list of all of the units for each particular building. For instance, I'll mention Sapphire, there's two buildings there, they will give us a listing of every tenant number. And then randomly, we're working on how to develop a random number generator for putting those numbers in, and then just they will pull out a 20% of those numbers for each tenant.
But I do think that what will go into that calculation is you wouldn't want to have them all on the same floor or in the same building. So you'll pull maybe, you know, one, and make sure you have one from each floor, at least one from each building, right? I mean, there would be, there's some science that's going to go into this to make sure that when you pull that 20%, it's reflective of the entire.
Right, but I guess, I guess, you're going to tell the manager which apartments you want to go into, and he has to get consent.
That's right.
Now, when I read it, it seems as if we're going to rely on his verbal notification to you that he received consent. We're not asking for any type of, like, form, which, or anything like that that says the occupant gave consent, which kind of makes me a little nervous.
Well, he's got the relationship with his tenant, and so what we're saying then is that he lets them know, "This unit has been selected for inspection, will you give your consent?" Again, if he were, I guess what you're posing is, what if he just lies and said, "They said it's okay"?
Or what if there's a tenant he doesn't want because he knows something's going on in the apartment, so, but he wants to be more predictive, right? So he says, "Let's show you the apartment where there's..."
But we're going to pick, and we wouldn't let him substitute another one. You know, and again, remember, there is a housing law in Michigan. If the landlord were to lie and say, "Well, yeah, my tenant, they gave permission," and it was a lie, he would have liability under the housing law, so I would hope that wouldn't.
But by not having anything actually written, what if he says, the tenant comes back and says, "I never gave you permission," and he says, "Well, I told that to Southfield and he still insisted." You know, you can, that's why I think just to have something written would be, whether it's a form or checklist or...
Well, Mark, you got to document the fact you got authorization for this, is that correct?
At some point, normally we would. That would be the coordinator of the program. This is no different than a single-family residential unit that we try and get into repeatedly, and then we make arrangements with the owner and the tenant to get in. The coordinator, sometimes we may be calling these tenants if they give us their numbers and we'll say, "We're going to be out there on this day." If we have a difficulty, I think we can work through those problems.
Yeah, let me reinforce something that all through this discussion with this, even when I went out on this with you, there's a process of scientific, scientific statistical sample. I used to use it when I did auditing, and so that would give you your accurate 20% within a plus or minus, and so that way you're covered too in the event this scientific sample gave you this unit. It was not chosen because of the landlord, but you got this on a scientific basis, and that's where your, when you boil it down, that's where your accuracy comes in. I looked at 20% of this particular universe, this scientific sample tells me it's accurate within this one of, you know, plus or minus. It's like you see on these polling things. So, by using that, you cover yourself with respect to someone's personal bias of selecting a unit, and so this is a scientific sample, and then obviously if you get denied then, then you pursue your legal...
Absolutely. And I think we'll err on the side of getting the warrant.
Right.
If there's an issue, my advice is, let's get the warrant.
Right.
At the same time, I'll use your example, you know, in corporate America, we never do anything on a verbal consent. Everything is done, you know, done this form saying, "You have permission to..."
Well, you got to document the fact you authorized to go there, right?
But it doesn't require...
But they're documenting, yes, verbal consent was given by the landlord or from the occupant to the manager. I just, I prefer...
I don't have a problem if that's a real concern is when we get the, whatever, let's say it's, we're going in for 20 apartments, we list them and have the management say, "I have gotten consent from all of these," or with the exception of apartment 302, I got, and then that would not let us know, and we could do that, that's not a problem. We could do that as a form.
We could absolutely come up with a form.
Tenant consent.
A tenant consent form where we have the ownership say, "Yes, I have talked to these units," and sign off on it as the ownership and say, and that way you have it in writing from them, and you have a document that they talked to.
I would want the tenant to sign that out.
Well, see, that, and I think that could, because the state law does not require the tenant to sign off. You can't, if the...
I would, I would want the tenant to sign that out.
Well, see, that, and I think that could, because you, the, the, the state law does not require the tenant to sign off. It, you can't, if the landlord says, I contacted the tenant and they gave me permission to open the door and let them in, that is sufficient. So, I don't know how, if you start saying you gotta get the tenant, I mean, we can look at this, but I, I think you're entitled to rely on the landlord. If the landlord tells you, I couldn't get consent for these apartments, then I, I think we're entitled to, to rely on that.
Right.
And just, I know we have the single-family residential program and we work with the owners of those properties and we don't always have tenant consent, but the tenants do know that we're going to be there. We come to the house and they're expecting us, so there is, you know, I, and that's a smaller scale, obviously, it's one-on-one, but, uh.
But, but you will cover yourself with respect to why you're there, you authorized to be there, so.
Yes, we'll work with legal on it.
All right, uh, Ms. Taylor.
Oh, I have a question, I don't have any issues or problems with anything that I've heard here tonight, but, um, I know that the elevators were a big concern. They are inspected by the state. My question is, is there a certificate or something that's required to be visible? And is that something that will be inspected?
It is in my checklist and it is located normally either in the elevator or in the management office.
Yes, that will be checked, or as part of this?
Same with the boilers.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, uh, we're talking about, you know, giving the advance warning that we're coming and everything. The apartment owner also has a checklist of what we're gonna be looking for. But if they know exactly which units that we're gonna go in, what's to prevent him from going in ahead of time? If he's got a bunch of extension cords all strung around, to unplug them all, take them off, and then we come in, oh, everything's okay. And soon as we leave, they plug them all back in.
Well, that's.
Giving them too much advance warning.
That's a concern and we talked about that. I mean, there's a balance here between, you have to give some kind of due process notice and you don't wanna give too long because that's exactly what can happen. And I think we settled on 15 days. That if you were talking about, you know, a 19-story building and you're gonna do 20% of the units, it's doubtful that in 15 days, an owner can get in there and clean up all the violations. I mean, we look at the Sapphire, look how long it's been and.
For the Sapphire example, you're probably looking at 62 units for the Sapphire.
Yeah, yeah. Is that realistic that they're gonna, but you're right, but I guess if the bottom, if the bottom line is.
It'd be great if they did, actually.
Right, if they get in and they clean all the units up and there's no more violation, then that's what we wanted, right?
Well, if they clean them up, but if they make it look like they cleaned them up.
Yeah, if they just Band-Aid it or something. Well, we're gonna have to rely on our inspection to note that then, so.
Mr. Ficassi.
Yeah, so, this, uh, chapter 105, the registration and inspection, and then, then we have a new chapter. Is this, are the changes enlarged as?
You know, I didn't on this one, that everything.
Wanted to see what was changed from the previous.
Well, I'll tell you.
I didn't have a copy of that.
If you go on page four, where it starts with inspections, everything from that point on is new. Everything that was from before, that's the registration and that is essentially intact. I'll highlight it when we bring it for introduction.
This says, let me, let me see, I'm trying to, uh, uh, it says, in gen- in, in general, the ordinance amendment would continue current apartment registration requirements and would add annual inspection requirements of all common areas, but would add annual inspection requirements. That's, and something added to it.
That's the new part. All, we never inspected before, so all the inspections.
So, you would have to, I had trouble following this.
Okay.
Usually it's enlarged.
I, I will do that for the night, if, if council agrees that they wanna move forward with this. For the 19th, when I bring it to you for introduction, I will highlight, you know, in caps, everything that's new. But for, really from this ordinance, it's everything from inspections on is new, it wasn't in there before.
How much, how much difference in cost is it to, to our existing, uh, apartments?
It, it will be, I, I don't know if you guys told us this, but all we were doing before was just registering and making a, a note that somebody, now we're gonna go out and inspect, I mean, that's a whole, whole lot of difference.
Some of these people are big owners. I, I think an apartment when I was reading this, I don't know how many units this son of a gun's got, they've got a lot of them. What would that, I mean, that cost them a lot of money, that, that they would have to cut back on something to maintain the integrity of the rental versus, you know, the units?
Well, I guess, I guess you would hope that this would have a positive effect because it would mean that these, these units were always, you know, in a good condition and habitable, so that hopefully in the long run.
But you'd still have to pay.
I, I, I agree.
And, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, how much more, uh, how does, and the big ones over there on, on Franklin Road are not included. Are they, it's a HUD unit?
I don't know if those are HUD or not, I don't think so. So 20%, yeah, however many units there are.
I mean, I, I mean, is this going to, to hit these big units?
A lot of cities do this.
What?
A lot of cities do this.
We haven't been doing it.
Understood, and, and these are the discussions I think that historically have been at issue, is does this, does this almost act as a, an impediment for an owner to, for these buildings, to have to go through these inspections? But I think at some point with the aging of these buildings and maybe some of the neglect that we're seeing, maybe that outweighs the cost to the owner.
Yep, is there any way to figure that out? Would that traditional costs be through, through one of our larger?
Well, I mean, did, did you take this?
We took, for example, a Sapphire.
Okay.
20% of the units, two people, approximately two weeks to go through the 62 units, common areas and the exterior, somewhere between around $6,000, maybe $7,000.
That's what the fees would be?
Yes.
$6,000 for what?
Two weeks, two people.
That'd be in a year potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like for what?
The owner.
That's a total for 313 units, there's 62 units.
What?
62 units.
62 units.
And all the common. And all the common areas, lower levels, mechanical rooms, penthouses, basements, te- all of the retail tenant spaces. Um.
That should come with some big money for you.
Underground parking structures.
Well, six, seven thousand dollars, but that's on an annual basis.
Yeah, every year.
Mm-hmm.
Underground parking structures.
What?
Two buses is for three years.
It could be for three years, that's true.
You know, in Sapphire, doing one of our leads with Sapphire, Sapphire, so they.
They fuse to it.
They, they're used to being inspected, they have units all over the Midwest evidently, just, just West or whatever. They, they're used to being inspected, so this is, uh, greater to them not being inspected here, so, uh, but if, if, uh, I didn't cut you off to, sorry, go ahead.
How many, how many apartment complexes do we have in the city, anybody know?
62.
14. 62, between 62 and 64, I'm pretty sure it's 64, not counting of course.
Complexes.
Complexes, not counting they.
Now, when you hear you say two housing, is, is, what does that mean?
Two inspectors.
Yeah, but they inspect everything, right?
Yes, they inspect.
Apartments and, and residential?
They could be used for the single-family residential, they could not be used for building inspections. They were, they're not registered as building inspectors, they are simply housing inspectors. They don't need to be registered with the state of Michigan, there's a.
So, so, obviously if a single-family home.
They could.
They, they, they get a regular, they get a regular inspector?
They, no, right now we have a housing inspector that does them. They don't get a building inspector, they get a housing inspector.
Under the rental and the vacant?
Under the rentals and vacancies, and we can use them also for this program.
How can they do one thing and then, and then we require the other?
If there, let's say he notices something that is beyond his scope of knowledge,
Yeah.
uh, that there's compromised electrical, uh, there's in a typical unit like the ones on Franklin Road, the red.
Yeah.
Buildings, those, each of those units have, what are those called?
Regals?
Regal towers, those have individual furnaces in them, okay? They don't have a boiler system, so if he notices something that's out of the ordinary in those units, what, well, first of all, we would have, those units would require a certification by a licensed mechanical contractor to do that certification. But if he notices something that's out of his scope of knowledge, he can always rely on a building inspector to come back in or a trade inspector to come back in and inspect that.
That'd be different than the housing?
Yes, it would be the individual trades. If he notices plumbing issues that are beyond his scope of work, electrical issues or mechanical issues, then the trade inspector would be called in.
Would be the housing inspectors that would be doing, uh, the apartment?
Correct.
The 62 apartments?
Correct.
Two individuals?
Yes, there would be two individuals assigned to that. Assigned to that.
Why would they take one person to go through something as they, as Franklin Road thing to do the inspection?
It just depends on the size of the unit?
Well, usually as an example, Franklin Road is a high.
So, so don't forget, we're still only doing 20% of, of it, so you have to consider that.
What do you mean, 20% of what?
Of the units.
Of the units.
We're not doing them all.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm just talking about the, the public.
The common areas.
Common areas.
Yes, yes. Yeah, a, a complex like that will take a, a good amount of time, so will Sapphire take a good amount of time. It's all in the ma- the, the time that you, you do the scheduling, if you're devoted to that.
The housing person, I guess, look, for example, the, the housing person, that we talked about Sapphire, where there's many things that are mechanical that have a problem. He would then get a regular inspector to look at these other things, tradesmen, for example.
Yes, and, and if I might, to the chair, to Councilman Ficassi, you also have, what we're gonna require in some of them is that, well, in this whole program, is that we get certification from a private company on like the mechanical systems, like the furnaces and stuff. We'll accept a report from them that says that the furnaces have been checked out at the site, we'll take that in, that would eliminate that. Uh, plumbing issues, uh, generally if we see something completely out of the ordinary, which we probably won't, um, you, you know, you gotta remember, most of these buildings are gonna look the same. You know, somebody's gonna look at it, they're gonna, you get pretty used to it over the years as to what they're looking at and what they're looking for. And, um, you know, maybe the first time through, you're gonna maybe need to call a trade inspector if you see something strange. But after that, you should get a pretty good level of understanding of, of these buildings, if that's your primary job, just like, you know, someone who goes out and does single-family homes, they know exactly what they're looking at and they might take a snapshot of something and send it with our, with our smartphones over to the mechanical inspector and say, do you see anything strange with this, or do you see anything strange with that? And you'd be able to get the answer right away, and there'll be, it'll be the similar problem in the Sapphire and every one of the uni- units. It's not like there's gonna be something drastically different in those, between one unit and the next. They're constructed the same way, they have the same type of plumbing, they have the same type of furnaces, they have the same type of electrical. So, a problem that you're gonna see conceivably, you're gonna see it, you know, the same problem in, in multiple units. So it should be a, the learning curve should be pretty short on that.
What is the maximum $4,000, what is, that stat?
That, that was for, that's an example of how Detroit handles it.
Well, that was a Detroit.
You're not recommending that we're capping anything.
No.
Whatever the fees are, whatever the fees are, they are.
It's gotta pay for itself.
Right, that's, that was the goal, right?
And, and it's, it's really strange also, if I might, to the chair, Detroit has a, kind of a little bit of a strange model and Detroit does their, they collect their own fees and everything, they do it by square footage, so that they can cover, so then you have to take the building, you have to break it down into square footage, and then you charge per square foot. It, it really, it becomes pretty complex as to how you're gonna, how you're gonna calculate the fees on, on it. And for us, we're trying to make it as simple as we could with the fees, to make it a per-unit, per common area and items like that, um, instead of trying to have a complex formula to figure out the square footage or, or anything like that. So that's, and, and we looked at o- other communities, we looked at, uh, Warren, we looked at, uh, Farmington Hills, we looked at, uh, Grand Rapids, we looked at, uh, Taylor, we looked at, so what's really strange about this is when you look at these ordinances, everybody kinda does something a little different, and I think it might be due to either the size of the complexes they have, or maybe how old their complexes are, or maybe, um, you know, they only have a couple of story buildings, so each one of them figures their fee structures differently. So we had to look at it more on a Southfield basis because we have really a lot of high rises, but we also have a lot of mid, you know, two, three-story buildings, so we've got a real mix that is not really, um, a, a, a good case for some of the other, um, ordinances that we've seen. So we kinda had to take the input from those other cities that we looked at and try and look at each one and see, well, why are they doing it that way and why are they doing it that way, and come up with something that fit for what our buildings are. The age of our buildings, the heights of our buildings, the scale of our buildings, et cetera.
Do these fees cause most of the units, or most of the, uh, buildings in our city to raise their unit costs?
That we would.
What?
I wouldn't know if they would, uh, raise their rents based on this.
Have, have these apartment owners been notified of this ordinance?
Um, I had a call from a person who is the apartment something association.
Your association, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I, I know he wants to see a copy of the ordinance, but I didn't feel comfortable until council at least saw the, the ordinance initially. I, I'm happy to provide it to him now, now that council's at least taking a look at it. If you have no objection, um, certainly I can.
I think input from them ought to be expressed.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly forward a copy, I just didn't wanna be forwarding a copy of a proposed ordinance that you hadn't even seen.
Well, just wait, wait until we finalize it, you know, we don't wanna send it to him. As long as, as long as it's not, when it's finalized, then we can show it to him. But I think this, this is a, uh, this is the outgrowth of a bad situation over Sapphire, that there's, it's horrible. I went over there with these gentlemen, a man, a lady and, and then, I was, I was mystified. We have a mobile toilet bowl, and we, we went in, I, I said, what is this? You know, and I, I'm just carrying along, but I won't get into that, but this is a, we're, 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 we're trying to fix a situation. Uh, and it's, uh, go ahead, Mr. Ficassi.
Well, I just, I just, I just kinda go back to, to what transpired before we wrote an ordinance. We met with these owners and got input from them, and that's why we didn't go through with the, the ordinance. And, and what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, is I would like to hear what their input is, I mean, not everybody is Sapphire.
Right, right.
And, and I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, you know, what their input is, if it's become the point where, where they, especially in South, they have to be competitive with their prices depending on the age of their units or whatever.
I mean, I, I would have no problem having, you know, the association give comments before we actually enact it, and that way you would know what their comments are, um, but that doesn't mean you have to enact an ordinance taking into consideration their comments.
Okay, we, we're gonna walk through this, this, this is going down the path, and this is the first step.
Yep.
In getting it there, so we, once we get to a certain point, if we want to do that, we look this way, that way, whatever. First of all, we gotta make sure we have this, this thing locked down where we like it.
Sure.
Is that it?
Well, yeah, I just, I just know that there's, uh, I heard that Hartman's got a ton of units. You know, what kind of impact is that on him and his apartments are always clean, neat, landscaped, and, and you know, you're gonna. You know, well, yeah, they gotta still pay a fee.
But that'd be every three years.
And all the other shit.
Okay, uh, Mr. Zola, please. I just, obviously the Sapphire issue's been in front of us, four, four years ago this issue was in front of us. We put in the most basic requirement, register. How many apartment properties registered? None. Ed Cardella personally went to every management group and delivered a pact, and they could not even do the most basic thing, register. I went through this in 1998, spent a year and a half of litigation with the same property group you just mentioned. We prevailed, our rate here is less than what was being charged, plus that was 100% every unit being inspected. I think the city's been very fair, thus we need to recognize that the marketplace is changing. City of Detroit now has an ordinance in place, um, there's gonna be some shakeup, a lot of, you know, 10 years ago, a lot of communities in South Oakland County would not even be looking at this. Now, mostly communities in South Oakland County have ordinances in place. I feel where we've been really fair is with the 20% sampling, um, that it's not 100%. Uh, in nine, in 98, I implemented an ordinance. Uh, in nine, in ninety-eight, I implemented an ordinance on six thousand apartments that, you know, every two years had to be inspected. And I think the ordinance areas, every third year, it'd be a problem. But, you know, they, they pay for it. And if you look at the rent structure, Southfield's rents tend to be about ten to fifteen percent above market. So, if the other communities have similar rates, we must be consistent with the market. Uh, legal challenge, I think if you look at the initial status, analysis staff that done on the staffing, we're gonna cover our costs. This isn't a profit center for the city, but we are gonna cover our costs and our overhead. Um, I was real frustrated four years ago that they couldn't even do the most basic thing, register. And that's why we had a lot of pieces fired. Go there, that they have an after-hour contact. When we had the fire a couple of years ago, when Pete Healy, or not, when Keith Brody was there with us, it took us almost four hours to get a contact because all the management went home, and that information wasn't readily available to us. I don't think we're asking for much. The city of Detroit ordinance, I, I think's a little comical in some ways. It actually goes as far as the tenant can place rent in escrow.
With the city, yeah.
With the city, but at one point, not have to pay rent. We haven't done anything crazy. And everything we've done has been in accordance with the state law and council should know. The last, every two years, the housing rental laws are being challenged by the industry. And that hasn't gone through a dramatic change. And I, I would say, how many laws do we write and ask the bad guys to come to the table and comment on? They'll have an opportunity to turn public comment to comment, but they've created this mess. And we, staff has hundreds of hours tied up in this, and there's almost no remorse. There's no one saying, "Gosh, we're sorry for all the inconvenience," but it's all right to charge somewhere two thousand dollars above a living squalor? That's not right.
Yeah, but what you're getting now is, we're getting buildings that, that they have put on the market. They've owned them, owned by corporations that, that have no knowledge about Southfield. And, and then you have people who are here that own them, that are here on site all the time. And, and some ones that are operated by managers. And I, and talk about North Park, when Craig was head of that thing, that thing was manicured, you know, beautiful, the garage was clean, he sat on the DDA, Greg Smith. And, and, and those things were, their advertising was New York, New York. And, and all these, you know, starlights were living there, doctors. And, and, and what I say soon is that the sold to an outside, then they have a manager. And the manager is almost as good as he is. And that's when things started going downhill.
Bad, and with a lot of these out of state, right, the out of state owners.
And so, now you're putting these people together with these people and, and getting burned. So, I don't know, I just, I'd like to know more about what these other cities are doing as far as fees and that kind of thing.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, we talked about this ten years ago.
Right.
And, um, so this is back because of the Sapphire, but, um, don't forget, we had lots of complaints about different towers, the Ambassador, then they became Eagles Landing. I mean, those places were hellholes. Um, and, uh, you know, the big difference is when the local people sold to out of state, these properties went down. You had people milking the property and not putting the proper money in it. You also had a, a lack of screening of tenants, taking their quick buck to fill an apartment rather than maybe being a little more selective. Um, and it, it's not just Sapphire. It's Coach House, Providence Place, Providence Tower. Um, I have a letter on my desk from the residents of Riverstone that I just got. Uh, complaining.
Form letters?
About what's going on there. Um, and other people at Riverstone have complained to me too about no parking lot lighting. And I had Ed go down there and try to rectify that. And, you know, this is long overdue, as far as I'm concerned. And the good guys, the, the people that do the right thing, it'll be a three-year process. Those that don't, we need to ride them. It's really about the Southfield standard, it's about quality housing here. It's about everything we're doing on maintaining our neighborhoods and housing stock. All of the initiatives that we have. And this is just another piece of it. And it's, uh, you know, the council has to act on this. It's, we've been, you know, again, the Sapphire is the latest, but there are others out there.
Let me just, yes, no, let me just talk a little history. When the city was growing up, there was such a thing called the Philadelphia Study. Philadelphia Study was out of use, and what they really decided was to run a city, you know, apartments were the thing because everything was done, the streets, the garbage, everything was done. The city, that's all they do is collect the tax dollar, the schools, the tax dollar, all right? And that's when we cut bait and was at, this to apartments. And, and they almost got bigger than we had single-family. Well, it seemed like the communities today, the ones that stayed, you know, more so like haunted goods, mostly residential, then they are stronger physically with their property and their housing and values than those who went to Philadelphia. And all I'm trying to say is, you know, you get caught in these kinds of studies, and you do things based on results of them under a certain period of time. And you look at it long range, it really was the wrong, sorry, as far as I'm concerned, it was the wrong way to go. And so, really correcting a bad situation that was supposed to be great for a city just to haul in the money and not have to worry about picking up persons' garbage and fires and all of this.
So, anyway, I think, I think where we are right now, perhaps we are dealing with decisions that were made in the past. So, we have to appropriately deal with this decision today. And as has been noted, as a former corporate manager, you get what you expect. So, going down the road, we, this, this will go through the process, what a process it goes to become an ordinance. But I, I personally, as a council president, I never wanna see a hundred people coming in this, into this room uninvited and telling us, "What can we do for you?" And we, "What can we do for..." This is what we are doing for these individuals who live in the tenants in this particular city. And I've always stated with Sapphire and everybody else, we want the tenants to be successful, homeowners to be successful, and proprietors to be successful. This is our way of making sure the tenants are being successful, living in the buildings that, that are here. And so, one way of protecting ourselves and taking a personal bias out of it, and I mentioned it, we can go to LTU and get scientific samples. And I think we should explore that with respect to the PhDs over there. This is my university. We got fourteen thousand twenty units in the city, and each one of these are parked buildings.
Right.
I wanna, I wanna get a sample that is scientific, and it will be accurate up to that. So, we can't, we taking a personal bias out of it. So, I, I think our group, staff has done an excellent job looking at the best practices. They pull these together, and this is what we have concluded as of right now for, for our ultimate objective is to inspect these units on a routine basis for the protection of, of the tenants.
That's right.
So, um, this is the, go, go ahead and tell, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Real quick, I, I agree with, this is something that's long overdue. I'm really happy to see that we're working towards getting this fixed. I have a question though, and I think Fred touched on it earlier. When management changes, unless they voluntarily register, you don't know that, right? But this, with this program in place, it will require you to know because you'll have to go in and inspect it. And the reason I'm asking is like everybody else has been getting letters and that. The Franklin, which was a really, really nice apartment complex, as I think I know several people that live there, they're calling me saying, "Now that the management has changed." When I ask people here at the city, they didn't know anything about it. They're not required to tell you. But something like this, on an annual basis, somebody would have to tell you something, right? Because you have to know who the contact was, and now you don't have that.
No.
Right.
That's correct. And our registration form, it, it gives us all that information, contact numbers, resident agents, et cetera. I'm sure that the program coordinator will make periodic checks throughout the year to verify that because when they change ownership, there's another fee for them. They complete the form that we gotta chase them down for. So, the program coordinator will be keeping tabs on these sixty-two complexes, and that's part of their job.
So, actually, rather than not telling the owner that management changes, they're giving out a general fee of some sort.
Well, that'd be a violation of the ordinance too.
They're in violation of the ordinance also.
This is really good. So, I can tell that to our residents. We're getting a lot of complaints about the apartments.
All right, so we ready to move on to the next?
So, if, if there's consensus on this, it would be brought on the nineteen, nineteen, for introduction? And then potentially for the twenty-sixth for enactment?
And if we do go forward with this, will it take effect immediately, or will we put the effective date maybe six months out? I'm just kinda speaking of what, that I'm saying, so there's not, so people have those stats sometime to digest this before we start.
We actually talked about that, but one of the things that I think kinda came back to, let's just make it effective immediately because they have ninety days to register. So, that, that automatically kind of delays things. And then, I think it's ninety, right?
Yep.
Okay. And then after that, we're gonna schedule an inspection, so we're not gonna get to inspections for probably...
Maybe a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, I mean, it's already, it's already, all they've gotta do in the first ninety is come in and register. We can certainly do that. We can make it effective on a date certain, if that's what council's desire is. And again, we talked about that, but then one of the reasons we went back to, let's just know, because we know in that first ninety days, we're just gonna have registration.
But don't you have to get inspection now after the ninety days?
Yeah, then, then we start scheduling inspection.
Yeah.
Can our inspectors handle that right away?
Uh, yes. I've interviewed one building inspector currently, and I am interviewing another group next week. They're beginning building inspectors. I can start them out on this program. And in the meantime, I will put out requests for two additional housing inspectors. And while this program is into effect, and a coordinator, assistant coordinator for the program. At this point, Diane will be working with the program because she's been working with us on developing these ordinance and fees and has been with us daily trying to determine how to make this work. But she, she also has other duties, so I'll have to provide her with an assistant to work this, work through this program.
And, and if I might also, there's, so within that first ninety days, we're gonna be sending out a packet that includes not only the registration, but the other information that you have about what we'll be looking for in the units. That'll give the management time to look at, "Oh, I see, they're gonna be checking this, 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 and this." So, maybe oughta go through in that period of time, in that ninety-day period of time, look at my place, see if stuff's buttoned up, cleaned up, um, for that, that period of time. And as Mark said, we'll have a program director, we'll also have an assistant that'll be keeping the information current. And there'll be a little bit of time where myself and some other staff will be taking, since we're, we're the most adept at doing these particular inspections, we're not just gonna put a housing inspector out there by himself to start out with. We're gonna have a training process where the senior inspectors go out with them, walk through it, give them an idea of what they should be looking for and what they should be doing. So, there'll be a, a little bit of time there where existing staff will be training the housing inspectors because we've been through quite a few of these particular sites, so we have a pretty good idea. And most of us have all been filled in as rental inspectors or vacant inspectors, so there will be a little bit of training time within that also.
Okay, is there a consensus that this moves on?
Okay.
Which scenario are we using for the fee schedule?
Two, two hundred. That's what staff has recommended.
Okay, all right. Okay, this is, this will move on then. All right.
Is there any, do you want me to send it to the apartment associations in Michigan?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
I do. That's the record going on, show that I said yes. What do you think?
All right, okay. Rachel, you got that?
Of course.
All right, um, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Okay. The next item is the proposed amendments to chapter eighty-three. And I should note that Deputy Chief Lucia is here. He's been working with his officers on the whole massage parlor issue recently. And, and I know he probably wants to jump in. But as part of, I think, these apartments enhanced program is to finding out how many of these massage establishments are existing within the city. Um, I think they noted there are a lot more operating than what we have licensed. And so, as part of that, you know, Nick and I met and his staff, and one of the things we saw immediately with respect to the ordinance that we have is that this ordinance was drafted and enacted by council back in the late eighties, I believe. And at that time, the state had no licensing of, of any of this. Since that time, the state now has taken over, to the exclusion of municipalities, the licensing of the massage therapists themselves. So, the, the people that do the massages, we cannot license or permit anymore, which we did require in our initial ordinance. So, now that's been stripped of us. So, the point of the ordinance amendment in front of you is to take out any requirements about licensing the individuals because they, that's state law, but we're gonna still license, and we think it's appropriate, to license the establishments. Um, and so, that's really the primary amendment here, is taking out the prior requirement about permitting the myomasologist or the person that does the massage. And in part of that also, we're, we're working on the application, so when a massage establishment comes in, they have to identify in the application, who, who are the people working for them as a massage therapist? And so, what we've now said is, okay, not only name us the individuals, but give us a copy of their state license. So, that way, when all of this goes over to the police department to determine whether to approve a massage establishment license, they will know that, okay, here's, here are all the persons that work there, and here's a copy of their license. So, it gives them better information right up front. But in essence, that's, that's the change that we're proposing to make, is making it consistent with state law.
Correct. And we started our compliance check inspections this year. We identified that we only really have three locations in the city that applied for a license that they required to have. Uh, we identified through Google, Groupon, about forty locations that we're, we're testing in the city. So, we began our compliance inspections about two, three weeks ago. We've conducted about twenty-eight inspections. Uh, about eight cases have been submitted to the city attorney's office for warrants for violation of the city ordinance. The ones that we've submitted, we suspect there's something going on there other than just legal massages. About seventeen have been, we're working with them. We believe they're legitimate, that they did not know they need to get licensed through the city. So, we're giving them a grace period of about two, three weeks to get into compliance. They're gonna have to come see Ms. Hawkins, get an application.
Get a massage.
Apply, and hopefully, if we get them into compliance, if they do pass the background inspection, that's gonna generate revenue for the city that the city wasn't getting. I, Ms. Hawkins, I don't wanna put you on the spot. Do you know what the inspection fee is set by council?
It's horrible.
Is it low?
It's, it's, it's low, so I wanna say it was like a hundred, a hundred dollars, but...
Well, this might be a good time.
To look at the fees, particularly in other cities, the best practice has been the fee versus how many, also, how many therapists you have, but also have to pay a fee as well. So, if you have two, in addition to your hundred dollars, you'd have to pay a hundred dollars per therapist. Um, interact to make all... Make, also, we are looking to try and make it easier for the applicant, so we're looking at doing some little reforms, the whole process for our massage therapists. The business license is going to be basically hand in hand with the new proposed ordinance, and so they can come in with most of the stuff that they need, and even work with ID. Easier applying.
If you raise the fees too much, it's probably going to go all the way.
You can leave.
That's all I have, yes.
Mr. Morris.
Can you provide us with the names of the three that registered?
I don't have them with me. There's one on Northwestern, next to the liquor store, northbound Northwestern. Touch of Ty. And there's one right at the corner of Northwestern, southbound, right at Twob, right at Franklin, Malibu, or not Malibu, something like Maui, something like that, and then one is called, I can get it for you, though, somewhere in the center, but there's always gray.
So, so, just real quick, there was a massage place on Southfield Road, and I'm just going to disclose, because I went in, my back was hurting, and when I came out, my back was hurting, my shoulder was hurting, I mean, what's going on? Do these people know what they're doing? So I don't know if this place wasn't registered, but just from, you know, liability standpoint, could someone say, you know, if they wanted to sue, you know, that, you know, proprietor, or if they weren't registered with the city? I'm just talking about from a...
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I think that's why the state, there are probably a lot of reasons the state got involved, but I'm sure one of the reasons is, is to make sure that the people that are performing the massage are qualified. There's continuing ed requirements of them, so it can't just be anybody saying, oh, I can do massage therapy.
But could there be liability on the city?
No, I don't think on the city. No, 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 absolutely not. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not like jumping in and guaranteeing, we're just saying that these establishments need to be clean, you know, that we need to make sure people are licensed by the state, and so we're looking at more of a police power, but in terms of, right, what activity there is, no, no, there's not like...
Some people are trying to get around it by saying that they're like acupressure therapists, which they don't have to go through, a massage therapist, so you'll see some places as like acupressure, you see them in the mall, and different places.
We also have identified some operating in a residential zone area, so that is, you know, they're being shut down.
Right, because they don't have, they can't operate residentially.
We are currently investigating one where a female or two have alleged that the masseuse has improperly touched her during the massage. That's going to be, you know, we're going to be seeking criminal warrant on the individual for a criminal sexual conduct charge.
Ms. Frasier.
If the state licenses the person to be masseuse, or...
I am a scientist, yes.
Who's looking at maybe human trafficking?
We are.
Are you? Because that seems to be, when you read articles, that seems to be a place where that case placed that, and nail people and stuff that...
We're doing physical inspections of the locations. We're saying out a police supervisor and a detective, they're physically inspecting the location, they're not allowed to live there, they're not allowed to, a lot of things, so we're looking into that, and that's one of the major things that we look for.
Okay. Ms. Frasier.
Yeah.
Ms. Owen.
Nick, for council, you want to just touch on your department's other morality type efforts that you have done?
Correct. We're also doing the liquor license inspections. We've got a list of every location in the city that's got a liquor license. About a month ago, Chief Hawkins sent every establishment a license, a letter, saying we're going to be doing inspections, make sure you have your things in order. They're doing decoy inspections. We actually got quite a few thank yous from business owners, saying, hey, thank you for doing this. I'm putting a sign up right in front of everybody, so when I ask my customers, they don't get upset, they're doing it to warn their employees, and we are right now, it's been about three weeks, we're inspecting every establishment that has a liquor license in the city, making sure they have their license displayed. We've identified two, three, maybe four locations already, not major violations, didn't have the right license posted, minor things like that. We haven't had any major violations yet, so that's for the liquor. We recently, with the assistance of the city attorney's office, closed down temporarily at least a hookah lounge on northbound Northwestern Burn Hookah Bar. What occurred with that, it was being sold, we didn't know about it, we had several police incidents at the location, violent incidents, shootings, stabbing. We called the owners up to ask for a meeting on a Friday afternoon. A young lady came, identified herself as the owner, the new owner of the business. We had already conducted two, if not three undercover operations at the location. We told her, we basically played face-up poker with her. We showed her our cars, we told her what the ordinance was, we told her what the state required, we told her that we had done undercover operations in there, we showed her pictures of open consumption of alcohol in there. Before she left the meeting, we advised her that she'd be violating the law if she continued opening. She continued opening for an additional two weeks. She advised us that she couldn't close at midnight, because she wouldn't make any money. We told her, you know, I'm sorry, but here's what the ordinance says, you have to close at midnight. We told her, you have to check ID at the door. She says, no, I don't have to check it until I sell it to them. We told her she wasn't allowed to have alcohol in there, she said, you know, she didn't want to hear anything we had to say.
Well, because she wasn't selling the alcohol, just the cup.
She was selling cups for five dollars each, and telling the customers to go to the liquor store next door and bring them down. She advertised her New Year's Eve party, that they were going to have this wild party, and that she was going to have food, which she's not allowed to have, and that there's going to be drinks, and it was a twenty-five dollar cover. She didn't have a liquor license. They told our undercover officers that they were pulling a special one-day permit, which was not truthful. So we have stepped up our enforcement of the...
Well, and warrants were, both felony and misdemeanor warrants were written, that's why, right now, it is closed.
Correct. Three local charges, zoning or city charges, one felony charge, state charge for allowing the consumption of alcohol in a licensed location. Basically, she was running after hours joint.
Question on the, on section seven point five oh six inspections. It doesn't say if there's any rules around inspection, just that they can come in and inspect for a purpose of inspection. Do they need to give any warning? Is it just random? They can just walk in and say, why don't you...
No warning, as long as, so correct me if I'm wrong, as long as they're open for business during business hours, we are allowed to go and inspect.
Okay. And then, page five on the bottom, page fifty-five years. The way I'm reading it, it seems like there's, I don't know, maybe word or two, or it's not even seen, it's a very long sentence, and just, especially the first line, under eighteen years of premises required to have licenses. I think there may be a word missing.
Seven...
Seven point five oh one.
One, one, okay.
No massage of any person under the age of eighteen years of premises required to have licenses.
Yeah. Shall be permitted. Upon premise, upon...
Upon the premises, or upon...
Well, premises that are required to have a license pursuant to seven five oh two.
Okay.
Which, yeah, so that...
The way I was reading...
Yeah, it's, and again, this part is not being changed, I just, that's the language that's been there, but I, I, they're just saying upon any premises that are required to have a license pursuant to seven five oh two. So that's why it, it's awkward, I agree with you.
It's legal, it's very legal.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's what I said, it's probably legal, legal means, but I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that correctly.
Right, right.
Um, the other, the other question, what was it, I'm sorry?
I sound like a legal guardian.
Right. But I, the other question is, are these establishments getting CMO from the building department? And if so, shouldn't there make be like some type of process where the building department goes to the clerk and says, hey, we are inspecting a massage parlor, or whatever, or any type of business, you know, you may want to...
I think a lot of these are just opening up. I mean, here they're doing it in residential, they didn't, they never came to the city, probably for an inspection.
We had a lady, case in point, we had a lady that called.
There were rooms they weren't allowed in, kind of, for some inspections.
And said she had been operating a business in the city for thirty years and never had to get a license.
So she is in a house or in a building?
She was in a building.
A commercial?
Yeah.
Well, I guess she never applied for any permits, so it would stay at the radar.
Exactly, so for thirty years, she's just...
Your point is, we need to work at closing those rooms.
Right.
I mean, that's a pair of state...
If building does know, then there should be a cross check to say, are they licensed? That, that makes total sense.
Yeah. Do you guys do that now, or...
If I might, yeah. If we're going out on an inspection for, yeah, we absolutely check and make sure they have a license, that's part of our process of scheduling the special inspection.
But if they don't, do you just notify them that they need one, or then do you contact the clerk's office to say, hey, this business needs some help getting...
Well, we would, first of all, notice, we would absolutely let planning department know, first of all, make sure it's in the right zone and this place is there, and then, of course, we would check with the clerk, make sure they had it, and if they didn't, we would tell them they can't operate until, you know, when we're out on a special inspection, what we're out there to do is to give them a certificate of occupancy. They're not going to get a certificate of occupancy if they're not, don't have their license from the clerk, they don't have their approval from planning, they don't, they don't have those documents, they'll never get their certificate of occupancy.
But I guess in Ms. Hawkins' scenario, technically, don't even need one.
But now we're working, we have a, we have a workable plan with seeing the establishments via Google that are on there, so we have an Excel sheet of operating, operating businesses, and some of these businesses mostly not have a license. So we've identified the problem, that's the first step, and then from there, we're going to move forward and hopefully enact any disordinance, and then we'll have a process and procedures where the building department is talking to me, I'm talking to the police department, and that will make it whole. Right now, it's not whole.
Ms. Owen, I just, the new clerk is taking a lot of these licenses and putting them under review, and we've had some conversations. I think licenses will be a larger issue for the city council by next year, as the building department moves to the S and A, we're looking at... And there has been some discussions about one-stop job, but I think part of the message to council is we're going to continue reviewing things, and they may be done for a while.
All right, Ms. Morris, do you have...
Yeah, I just, on that same provision, patronage by minors, now, does the legal guardian need to be in the room while the massage, if it's under eighteen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I absolutely...
It says during the massage, but does the legal guardian need to actually be in the room? They probably should be, but I don't know, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that to me is what it's saying, during the massage, they got to be there. Yeah, I mean, that's how I would absolutely interpret that, because that's the whole point, you don't want a minor with a massage therapist, and they're, you know, there is no, no parent or guardian there, and I don't think that's a good situation.
Yeah, so it says during, but I just want to...
I mean, I, I could...
Agreement.
I can make a clear, absolutely.
You can make clear, then. So you guys are going to just research best practices on inspection fee?
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, I would think, maybe, maybe we won't, maybe we'll bring this, get it introduced, because we could always come back on the resolution, establish the fee different, just to get this done, because that's something by resolution, and we'll just, and get the ordinance moving, which I think is important, and then we'll figure out what we want to do with the, with the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Frasier. Yeah.
Sure, I'd like you to clarify something that you said. The woman that said that I've been operating here for thirty years, but I never had to have a license, okay? How are we going to close that gap? If someone comes in, doesn't register, opens up a massage parlor in their house, how do we catch those people?
You're going to close the gap, because there's going to be advertising, so we're going to do spontaneous checks via internet on what is coming up. If I type in Google, massage therapist in Southfield, and if I have something that says fourteen eighty-six Glasgow, I know that that's residential, you know, property, so then I would call the police department and say, hey, we have a problem. So I, I think routinely checks weren't happening, so now we have a best practice in saying, hey, every three months or so, we need to look into routinely checking or Googling these massage therapist establishments, because they're, they were literally, they were popping up like flowers blooming in the spring. So just having those places, so when we talk about massage therapists, we'll have a comprehensive calendar of things that we need to do throughout the year, so that we can...
Okay, now, another question, sort of related, do nail technicians have to be licensed?
No, we don't have, I don't believe we have a nail spec ordinance.
Because I think that's another one that's...
Yeah, I was about to say, but as Fred alluded to, we're working on our whole auspice of business licenses in general, so give us a little time.
And that might be one that may be a recommendation by the police department, you know, should we, is that another area where we do have, you know, human trafficking, I mean, maybe that's one that we should look at, the establishment, again, you know, a nail salon establishment.
Right now, what we looked at is if they are offering massage services at the nail salon, or...
Oh, right, right.
But just a nail salon, no, we're not, and we haven't seen an issue with that. We are also looking for decoys to go in and get a massage if anybody's interested.
Assuming that this will be part of the ongoing process of identifying need, and if we have a need for the look at nails, when you look, okay. Any problem with this moving on?
But if we, if we're, nobody's looking at it, how do we discover a need?
Well, I, I thought the police department, if they're...
Only if they're doing massages along with the nail. But if they're just doing nails, nobody's looking at that.
Well, is there any, is there any, I mean, we know that the reason we got into the massage therapy businesses is because we knew there, there was issues with that.
Sure, sure.
If we don't know from the police department that there are issues with nail salons, I, I'm not sure that, what would be the, the basis, why would we want to go into pure nail, nail salons unless we know that there's an issue? And I, and I, I would be looking to the police department, really, for that.
How do we know that there's any problem with apartment complexes unless we do twenty percent inspections?
Other than what's been brought to us?
Yeah.
So we know that there's an issue, I...
With the ones that were brought to us.
I think it's supposed to be proactive, sometimes you just be proactive, and I know where I've been, I've seen permits for people to do nails. I've seen all doing business aids or something, a business permit, so I'm assuming they have to have a license by the state or something?
Right.
I think that's a cosmetology, isn't it?
So if, from a being a proactive standpoint, is there a need for us to look at that, or are we just being busy?
Well, we want to look at the establishments within, so now you're talking about hair salons.
It's a whole nother realm, like they should say where we're at.
Yeah.
And then we'll perfect this, we'll perfect this first, and then we'll...
Yeah, we don't see it.
They're trying to send you one conversation out of that. It's probably proactive, but...
Right, but you got nails and hair, that's a whole nother...
This is Owen. The broader discussion, but it also reinforces our tax base, our personal properties, as we canvass different buildings, we find things that we don't always know about, or was a CMO, does it exist, and by having that database, it becomes, it can become a basis of your fire safety inspection. Certain businesses have greater risk, and, you know, this is, this is a process, you know, this is a good start.
All right, this moves on then.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Item number three.
Item number three is the change to the police regulation regarding minors in possession. So obviously, under both state law and city ordinance, somebody under twenty-one cannot possess alcohol, and particularly could not have consumed alcohol, because that would be illegal. So we had, and we've had for years, a minor in possession ordinance, and the state effective earlier this year has now changed some of the requirements for a minor in possession, and we're recommending that we amend our ordinance so that we're consistent with what the state law requires. And the biggest change here is that in our ordinance, a minor in possession automatically was a misdemeanor, as our, any of our police regulations are, and that was true with state law as well. And I think there was some thought process on the state now that just... And I think there was some thought process on the state now that just, again, you have a nineteen-year-old, say, gets, gets arrested and, and they find out they've been drinking. To, to automatically put a criminal record on that individual is not necessarily the best way to go. So the state law now says on a first offense, it's a civil infraction. You're not, you're not, you know, kind of weighing down an individual already with a criminal record, and that stays with them for a long time, impacts probably educational opportunities, jobs, and so forth. So, that's the primary change, is that a first offense now, under city ordinance, will be a civil infraction. After that, a second offense can be a misdemeanor, and it would be a misdemeanor. But the fees, the fine would be reduced. So, the fine now would go to two hundred dollars, as opposed to the full five hundred dollars for a regular misdemeanor. On a third offense, you can go to the full five hundred dollar fine. And the other change, and there's just some minor tweaking here and there, but the other change, change is that, a lot of the time, the way that you are able to prove that an individual under twenty-one has been drinking is you do a breath test. This now requires that you do a, a search warrant to get a breath test. So you can ask a minor, you know, we think you've been drinking, we want to do a breath test. If the minor says sure, that's great, we can go ahead and administer it. But if a minor says no, then you've got to go for a search warrant, and you've got to get a judge or a magistrate to, to okay it. And then, and then some of the other things that the state has, has added is that a judge in a lot of this can refer the person to substance abuse right away, and try to get this thing before it gets into a problem that, that again, really impairs that individual for a long time. So that's all we're doing with the minor in possession. We are simply codifying the requirements now of state law. So, and, and this one does do the caps down, so that we made it clear what we're changing.
Okay, all right, this, straightforward. All right, let's move on to the next item.
Okay, the next one is the signs.
Scoreboards.
Yeah, the, the scoreboards. Okay, so, we know that this issue was, was kind of initiated by, a request by L T U as they do their stadium. Obviously, they're going to want a scoreboard. And I think the issue probably kind of has been around a little bit on high schools as well. Might, might want some scoreboard, or there's at least been the discussion. Right now, because on a scoreboard, you know, there is information displayed, it really does, under the definition of sign, a scoreboard is a sign. And yet, we know it's different than a sign, because a sign is there all the time, and it's for people to observe twenty-four seven. Whereas a scoreboard is generally there just for the duration of the event. So we wanted to, you know, look at what do other cities do in terms of scoreboards. And a lot of what I was able to find is that a lot of cities, not just in Michigan, but across the country, just exempt them, and say they're not a sign, because they are really focused on, on operations during an event. So the proposal that, that you'll see in here is that it's a proposal to amend the sign ordinance in section eight four four, eight point four four. And I would be adding subsection seven. And basically, what we would be doing would be exempting a scoreboard, provided it meets certain requirements. Now, here's where I think it gets, I mean, this just can go all over the place, just doing some research. You know, colleges can have scoreboards that are five thousand square feet. Some of the bigger colleges, five, six thousand square feet. L T U, we know, wants a scoreboard. I just took what I saw from a couple of ordinances, and they ranged all the, all over the place. So this is really a first attempt to bring it before council. We talk in here about a twenty-foot-high limitation on height and a two hundred square feet for the area of the scoreboard. We did get some information finally back from L T U. What is it that they were looking for? They were hoping for a sign of roughly five hundred and fifty square feet. So if we wanted to accommodate what they're looking for, that number would go up. And their, their sign, their scoreboard height was like twenty-eight, twenty-eight feet in height. Now, again, I can't say that that's unreasonable. It is a college, and if you look at some of these college scoreboards that are.
Lawrence, Wayne State?
Yeah, there are thousands of, yeah. So I think that's something we can have more discussion on, but it was at least an attempt to start the discussion. We thought what we do also, before this actually comes back to council, would be to, to refine this a little bit with L T U. Because we don't, we, we're trying to do this not just for L T U, but scoreboards in general, for high schools, any other schools that want to come, recreational areas, potentially, if we ever wanted to put a, a scoreboard up around here, or maybe an Inglewood. So what, what makes the most sense? But we do think a, a height and a size and area restriction makes sense. We also think that you should only have one per athletic field, I don't, or facility. I don't think we want, you know, dozens of these on a particular piece of property. We think that the face of the scoreboard should be oriented not towards, say, a road, so that people can see it, but more toward the spectator area, that's what it's there for. Now, incidentally, would it be seen on the road? Probably. But, but the primary orientation would be toward the spectator area. We think that, you know, messages on the sign, because we know that on the face of the sign, around the frame, it might say, you know, Tri-City, or it might have a commercial advertisement. So we, we've talked about, you know, limiting that to, to not more than thirty percent of the sign area. And then the illumination, that this thing is not lit and moving all the time. It's operational with illumination and the moving, the movies and the replays and so forth, only during, during an event. So those are the kinds of things that kind of came up with. Certainly, you know, happy to hear if council's got some other ones. But, but that's the proposal, to try to get something moving, so that as the site plan comes forward for L T U, that we have something on the books that either allows their sign, their scoreboard, or doesn't, or sets the parameters for them.
Twenty, twenty feet in height is not very tall. Was L T U, I mean, because I'm thinking, you know, like a basketball hoop is ten feet. Twenty feet to the, we're talking the top of the scoreboard?
Theirs is twenty-eight feet, which I don't think is unreasonable. I mean, again, this was a start.
Right.
I did see, I saw ordinances from, you know, thirty was a very common thirty feet. I, I saw ones that allowed a six hundred and fifty square area, square foot area of the, of the scoreboard. So again, they go all over the place, it's what I think council feels comfortable with. I know that, that Ed, who administers the sign ordinance, I think was a little, thinking of that the, the face of this one was a little large, but certainly something that we'd be willing to talk about with them. Council might say, look, you know, as a college scoreboard, you know, we don't think that that's too large, so.
Mr. Frazier? Yeah, listen to your explanation, you know, we talked about it at the legislative committee. But listen to your explanation, how about if we, well, let me back up just a second. L T U wants a scoreboard. They're just starting out their program now. We don't know how popular it's going to be. But if it grows in popularity and they get a larger student body, they're going to probably want to enlarge their, their fields and everything else.
Yeah.
So why don't we put a maximum height on them? So that if they don't really want to go up that high, that as their program grows, they can change the scoreboard to bring it up. So I don't think thirty feet is out of line.
Okay.
A maximum, a maximum of thirty feet. You know, I'm, you know, I have about the size of the screen, but, you know, let cooler heads think about that. But I would think that we put a maximum height of thirty feet. Because we got those condominiums next, next door to our neighborhood that are forty-four feet or twenty-five feet.
Sure, sure.
So, hey, that has, you know, they don't look gargantuan.
So you did talk to L T U, this is, oh, we have, and obviously, L T U is a good, a good resident here in the city. And we appreciate them, and they are growing.
Right.
So this is consistent with what you had feedback from them?
Right, it's a, it's approximately five hundred and fifty square feet. So, I think it was five hundred and fifty-eight when I calculated. So, you know, if we went to, say, six hundred, that would more than accommodate their sign. You know, obviously, then high schools and so forth could have up to that amount as well.
Sure.
So that seems, you know.
Mr. Cordello?
Yes, if I might, the conversation from L T U is this is pretty much a standard size, so that they could compete with the other, with the other programs that, or the other fields. And they felt that this size was in accordance with the other fields that are out there. And it was actually the size that they needed to be kind of in competition with those other sites, so that they could bring the same kind of events over to Lawrence Tech. Football, for high schools, whatever other athletic event, they need to be at a certain level in order to attract that, because it's apples for apples. I mean, if they don't have something, and another field has a larger scoreboard or a better scoreboard, then they're going to lose out on bringing those people to Southfield. So that, they gave us the size, that was their, their, their size.
Okay, all right. So what, what do you want to do with this, Ms. Morris?
Well, if, if council is okay with roughly, say, where the parameters of what L T U wants, if that seems reasonable, we can make those adjustments and bring this forward again on the nineteenth.
Okay, bring it forward.
So six hundred, say, in area, and thirty feet height.
Yeah.
Right, got it. Max, correct, got it. And then, the last, last one, last one? Yes. Okay, the last one. This one, this one would not be coming on the nineteenth. If council's okay with it, this is something that's going to have to, it's a, it's amendment to the zoning ordinance. So that'll have to go through the planning commission first. But wanted to see if, if council was, you know, in generally in agreement with, at least starting the process. So what precipitated this was, you know, under the, under the zoning ordinance, section five point two-two dash five, the public art requirement. If there is a new development and they meet a certain value of the development, then there's this public art requirement, and it caps out at twenty-five thousand. Now, the developer has an option. They can either bring in a work of art worth equivalent to, to whatever the allocation is capped at twenty-five, or they can just simply write a check to the public art fund, and they're done. So what, so that's simple enough, and yet, we had, we had kind of an issue. Somebody wanted to, well, they had a project that was under the ordinance, it did qualify to have the requirement, and yet, as a result of a, of a delivery, a fabrication issue, they were opting to put in a work of art. Because of the fabrication delay, they had finished everything on their site plan, and they wanted to open, but yet, they hadn't got their work of art. So we were reluctant, obviously, to give them a CMO, because they hadn't complied with the ordinance. And so, what, what the thought was, was, well, in those instances, let's do what we do for landscaping and other things, we'll just take a bond. So if you are, if you're ready for your CMO, but for some reason that is outside of the developer's control, weather, whatever, they, they can't get the work of art installed, we'll take a bond for the full amount of what their allocation is. So if it's a three million dollar project, they're going to, they'd owe twenty-five thousand. We would take a bond for twenty-five thousand, a cash bond, and we would hold that. Now, if the, if the planning department says, you've asked for thirty days, because that's the delay in the schedule, you'd have thirty days now to get the work of art installed. And yet, we'll give you a CMO today, because we're going to post this cash bond. At the end of that period, if they still don't have the work of art installed, then we are able to forfeit the bond and put that money into the public art fund. So what it does is, if you, if you want that option, we're going to, we're going to get it to you, and you, you can bring the work of art. But whatever that period is that's established, after you've posted the bond, if you still don't bring the work of art in, then we're going to cash that bond, and we're going to put it in the public art.
How many days?
Well, that, to me, that's, that's a step for, by planning. If it's a weather issue, it, they could say six months. If you got a, maybe it's a, it's, it's, you know, pouring some concrete or something. I think, I left it in the language here, really within the discretion of the planning department. What do they think the delay realistically is? If they say, you know, I ordered this work of art from Italy, and, you know, it's been delayed by a tariff or something, I don't know. You know, maybe it's not going to.
Yeah, that's right.
It may not come in for six months, so maybe the planning department would give six months. I mean, Jeff, I think that it's not, you guys would be comfortable with coming up with that. But at the end of that period, we're not going to just forget about it. Now, we're going to forfeit that bond, and it goes into the art fund.
But are they getting a full CMO or a temporary?
No, they would get a, they would.
It'd be a temporary.
Temporary, but we'd have that cash bond to guarantee that they're going to get the rest.
But if they forfeit, what happens with the temporary CMO?
It should be a CMO though.
Then, then they get a full.
Yeah, because now they've made their contribution to the art.
They still won't have the art.
Well, but, but there's money, yes, there's money into the art fund. And now, we'll go through, under the ordinance, the, the art commission will figure out how to, how to use that money, and come back to council and ask them, right?
Should be a missed a year.
Yeah, yeah, but what, what is?
Under construction, under construction.
But it might be, it might be a year.
You have a site plan, and now you have a building that's being built. All right, you either put the art there during the construction of the building, you're going to have to do it at the end, if you do the landscaping or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
It could be, but what if, what if it's just a delivery, the, the truck that's bringing it was, is only going to be delayed seven days? You don't want to automatically give a year. I, that's what I thought, I thought leaving it to this question.
Who's going to extend it?
I think the planning, I think the planning department, just like they do now, they exercise that.
Landscaping is the.
What?
Landscape, you know, building's ready in December, they're not planting trees then.
Yeah, so if I made you the chair, so in a circumstance like that, we'd issue a free CMO, subject to landscaping, be installed by then first.
All right, any other questions on this? What, what is consistent, does this move on? What's your next step?
I, this, I would send back to the planning department, they would take it through the process.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, that's not part of the amendment, but it's on the front of the ordinance. The last line says, the approval by the public art commission and the city council shall not be unreasonably withheld.
Yeah, I, I think that was, that was built into the original ordinance, just, just because art is so subjective. You know, I, I think that we don't want to be necessarily in the arts commission in a, in a position of, almost like censorship or prior restraint. I mean, art is art, and it, so I think that was built in as a result, even a lot of the discussions, that art is subjective. And so we shouldn't say, well, we're only going to approve art if it's done by, you know, a certain. Or, right, I mean, that could lead to something really being beyond unreasonable on the city's part. So I think that is why, as I recollect, that's why that language was put in.
Okay, but what's his recourse?
Well, then, if we said, we're not going to approve that work of art, and he, he thought we were being unreasonable, we, we would end up in court on this, and that, a judge would decide ultimately.
Is that, is that the recourse? Because I don't see anything.
Well, yeah.
I don't see any relief.
Because then, because then the developer would say, I tried to bring this work of art worth the appropriate amount, and you denied it. And therefore, when we go after them saying you didn't comply with the ordinance, his defense is going to be it was unreasonable. And so, again, a judge would decide it.
Okay, because I couldn't pick that out by reading this.
Okay.
Mr. Focazi?
Now, let me bring something up, because this will concern the mind, because there's a lot of things that we are asking people to do because of an ordinance that we passed of some kind due to vocability or this or that. And, and, and the expense to, to do it, way out of bounds. And there's no recourse to anyone when that happens, it's an ordinance. And, and so I get to, out of it, thirty-two million dollars at site plan, and I think that was there. They said you have to appear before the art commission. But that's, why would somebody that's going to spend thirty-two million dollars in the city have to be approved by the art commission?
Right.
I mean, don't we put enough stuff in the way of a developer? I mean, you got to retain your own water, you got to want to do with vocability, now you got art? I mean, I'm telling you from a developer's standpoint, I'd go away in a minute. If I was, if that man would have said, when he said to me thirty-two million dollars, and tells me that you got to appear before this group of art people before I give approval, and he'd get that delayed, I'd leave town. I'd go somewhere else. I'd go over there where they would bow and, I mean, I, I mean, I'm telling you, I, I go into, let me give an example. In New Boston, sitting in the lobby and. In New Boston, sitting in the lobby and your trustee comes by and the supervisor came by. Well, Mr. Focazi, what are you here for? I says, well, I got this old church nineteen-twenty-five, we wanna tear down, put some senior apartments on it, okay? Oh, yeah, come on, we're kinda coffee, come on and sit down. So I'll give you forty feet, alright? You have a cup of coffee and shoot the ball. Guy gives you forty feet, you know exactly where you're at, what's gonna happen? Boom, you go. I mean, I mean, you have people that waiting and waiting and waiting, you know? I mean, I tell you, and, and I don't wanna get into it with, you know, Mr. Yi, the delay of that four months, the, the people who were fighting it, they all out on it. They have no financing right now. Alright?
Hmm.
It's a six and a half million dollar deal.
Alright.
And that delay from not getting this and that and getting approvals to get it to the people. And they're gonna have to do, do something. I was called and asked if I knew anybody, I said, you know, I don't know any finance people. You know, but, but I mean, I think that someplace along the way, you know, we have to be reasonable. You know, I don't mind wanting something really great built in the city, but, but something, you know, every time a person gets, borrows money, every month that bill comes in, you have to pay it. More delay, more delay. And, and you're paying on a big mortgage. If you're paying on a million dollar loan, you know, you're paying every month, it's under construction loan. Then you get it turned over to a regular mortgage. But it's, it's a heck on, on wheels for a guy that, you know, is, is trying to get something built. And I, I think things should be done properly. I think the necessary restrictions be put in place and not to, not to hold off something because of going to another committee. And, and Dan was there at the time and he said, and I was, I don't know, I think Jeff was there too. Weren't you, Jeff, that day in tourist city, gotta go to the, to the planning commission or not planning art to get approval? I mean, I just, I just, I just think that we always gotta stay and look at being in a place and being in place and put yourself in the place of the, of the, of the person that's, is coming here to do business. And, and, and say, you know, how would you feel? Feel like, is it great? I'm gonna tell our neighbors, wanna hear, man, it's easy to do business in the city. Or you're gonna say, man, that's, I guess, go do all that stuff. And I'm just saying, I don't know what's going on with the gas station at thirteen hour with those big tubes still sitting in that guy's way. But whatever it is, somebody's, somebody should be, you know, on top of it. Say either get him out of there so the man can get his job done or, or, or put him in the hole where they're supposed to go. I mean, he was here almost, what, a month ago? He's still sitting out there. You can't even see around the corner. If you make a right-hand turn on Southfield Road to Southfield, he's sitting right there, all tubed, you know, hole in the ground. You know, you, you can't use a sidewalk. You know, I mean, I, I just, I'm just making these comments because being so opposed to it all the time, I deal with, you know, I deal with other cities and I'm just saying that we gotta be competitive.
Okay, Mr. Zorn, you have a comment?
I just, at the gas station, we're happy to check into it. Um, we are across lots of things can't be built. I suspect maybe we're waiting for closure from M D Q before we can put new things in. But we'll make some phone calls by now. Obviously, I concur, the more redevelopment ready we can be, but all of our processes are transparent and upfront. They're spelled out that these, these are requirements. And just like having a, a cup of coffee with our planning staff, samples over these requirements with the developers. So, uh, you know, we do have the art requirement in place. And I, I will tell you, in the case of Ottawa, you know, that's one of the things, why they chose Southfield was, you know, they were, they want what's happening in Centropolis, they're, they want.
You weren't there when they, when they say you're joking. Okay, I was, Dan was there. And they, and they, owner of the property, Mr. Jonah, said the same thing. What do I do? That was the next question, what do I do to, to get this? And he says, you gotta appear before the art commission.
Okay, um, that document is pretty much ready?
Yeah, I mean, unless, you know, I mean, it just establishes that bond.
Okay, alright, so that's.
So if there was consensus, then we would have planning initiate.
Like a sense of that we, we moved this art, this document forward.
Okay. Yes.
Alright, um, item number that was added, item number five will be an update on the sixtieth anniversary celebration. Mr. Zorn, what's this?
Yeah, Mr. President, Council, tomorrow afternoon, the group of us, Michael Manning and Community Relations, this afternoon.
Oh, you got a couple more, still short. Okay, yes, please.
You know, this, this is the event that's being put together for that Sunday, April twenty-ninth. Uh, and you can see, you know, we're booking the entertainment. It's gonna be kind of a playoff of our family fun day in the pavilion. Uh, there'll be kites, uh, there'll be banners going up on the sixtieth anniversary. But we are working on this and as more materials come together. This is the one event. We're also working at, I think there are three other events that Parks and Rec and Community Relations are working on. One is, uh, two of them are concerts and then the other is a, very, the, the.
The next to the best.
Yeah, and then the Flower Day.
Flower Day is the mid-century modern architecture forum.
So.
And Family Fun and Safety Night two is another, which follows the, uh, the, uh, summer solstice.
Yep. So tomorrow afternoon, we'll be meeting and putting just a sampling of this. This is, uh, Michael Manning gave me this, this is what you'll see on that Sunday event. Uh, and that's actually a day after the anniversary. But our thought process was in recognition of the city's sixtieth, uh, year. There'll be multiple events throughout the year. A lot of them are, will be simply de-labeled like you guys already do, uh, kind of, there's some cost effectiveness to that, but the heights of awareness that the community is sixty years old.
Is, uh, is, uh, Paul, he's working on this, involved in the budget?
Uh, there is, within Parks and Rec, uh, we had built a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for various built, uh, events and that's what we'll be charging this too. I think, uh, oh, we haven't used that much of that so far today.
But I talk about like overtime and that.
We have a guy in the staff overtime of that.
I think approximately, number should be here.
Okay. Um, would it, would it make sense if we guys kinda got a report on this every week?
Sure.
Let me, the current update that, that's reasonable, every other week perhaps. So council, uh, you guys agree that we perhaps every, every other week update on this progress of it?
Yeah. Some of the ideas we talked about to us, some of the other comments we gave.
Right.
On events and activities and things. I'll just personally say I was, I was pretty overwhelmed with the whole presentation.
Okay.
Obviously, I think it's, uh, robust enough for a sixtieth anniversary for us. I think we could've done a lot better, probably should've started a lot earlier, uh, in planning of this. And I liked, we didn't know it was coming. And, uh, you know, I'm not, and I'm, I'm not against us spacing out events throughout the year as a sixtieth so that we can have more time to maybe develop some other nicer activities that are actually due to highlight our city and not, uh, just be focused on that weekend or so forth. So I just wanted to, it's just been bothering me ever since I said it. I don't think I'm alone.
No, you're not alone. I've already voiced that several times, but. It seems like we rushed.
Yes, right.
It is rushed.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it seems like and I don't think, that's not, to me, Southfield is rebranded. We're trying to do things better. And a lot of the things, again, are just what we've done before.
Yeah.
Uh, even coming down to the banner, I know we saw it, but it's not the new futuristic Southfield that we are. We, we're more, I mean, to me, it's like it's just going back and saying, okay, here's what we did in fifty, for our fiftieth and we're just gonna change it to the sixtieth. That's what it seems like to me. We do have all year, we should do something that's more identifiable with the way we are today. Even if we did a playoff fee S F L D, I mean, that's what people are noticing in, in recognizing Southfield as today. When you mentioned Southfield, a lot of people, oh, I saw that big orange S F L, you know, S L F D. That's not wearing anything that I've seen. This is good, I'm not, I'm just, and I just, and we do have all year, so we don't have to rush to do anything.
Right.
So, right, that's just fine.
They're meeting tomorrow?
Yesterday.
Thirty-six dollars, thirty-six dollars a dozen.
The gala would be nice.
At least they didn't.
What did they make of it?
Six over five. We're making these stuffs up.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's keep one conversation. Mr. Frey?
Yeah, that's what I said. Thirty-six dollars a dozen for cake mix, for, for cupcakes, per cupcakes. Right here.
Yeah.
Three dollars a piece for a cupcake? Great. Ain't changed that much.
Uh, Mr. Cruz? Reminded to, again, just to make sure, the black tie, for fair, if something, we don't wanna lose that.
Gala?
Thanks, the gala, but it's somewhere in there. I just wanted to read it, read that too.
Alright.
Give me a half of the cake.
Buck and a half, yeah.
I, I, I think Mr. Zorn, he's here, needs to be meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
I think what, you're taking away certain comments, taking, taking away certain.
What time do you want me to come?
Yeah.
I told three dollars a cupcake.
I can make a cupcake.
It's like that bowl, that over.
Yeah, right, yeah. Forty-eight dollars a dozen?
I took a fist.
Forty-eight dollars a dozen. Four dollars a piece. And they sell out every day.
Close the door.
Yeah, close the door when they sell out.
Okay, I think, uh, we reviewed it, Mr. Zorn has some notes that he's gonna take to the meeting tomorrow and we will be getting an update every other week, uh, with respect to where we are and, and perhaps this will evolve into, uh, annual, several things throughout the rest of the year. Uh, but clearly we, and then was, in a sense that this was kind of short notice, I guess. Uh, um, well, we, it was looking on, we were, and it's, oh shit, sixty days.
Sixty years' length.
Yeah, sixty years' length. Alright, well, that's, that's, uh, this, this, this is a, in progress. Uh, item number six, which was added, um, I'll make this a clerk, uh, brought to my attention that, uh, we were at the last, um, regular meeting. We were almost out of, we were not legal at one point, I'll, I'll let her explain this. But she was going through the roll call and there was chatter and she mentioned to me, you cannot, once you go to a roll call, you cannot.
I'll, I'll explain.
Yeah, okay, but then, I'll let you, uh, the reason we are gonna have this class of Robert's Rules of Order next month is for these particular purposes, so.
So basically, a couple, I've, I've seen it on two instances since I've been the clerk. It's been, the motion has been, it's been moved for a motion and it's been to court. Then you have the opportunity for discussion and then I would, I would start the roll call and then it would go back to discussion. That is not Robert's Rules of Orders and the first time I seen it, I just let it go. Uh, but I seen it again and the problem is, if we do things like that, we can get challenged and that could null and void what we're trying to do. So when we have that motion and we have that second, then we have that opportunity for discussion, then once the discussion is over and that roll call starts, we can't go back into the discussion.
And we will have a class in Robert's Rules of Order next couple of weeks and we'll have these scenario play. I understand we have different scenarios and we're gonna be participatory. Um, a student, uh, all council people will be involved and understand this. I'm glad this, um, I thought you brought this to my attention and, uh. Okay, are you a question on that?
Yeah, who's their instructor, Andy?
Uh, Coco Thor.
She's good.
Yeah.
Can't you recruit, Michigan, this will be.
Alright, uh, next one.
When is that date? When is that date?
April three. April three, yeah, April three. Uh, next item on the agenda is communication. First, we need to recognize Gerard Mullin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Tonight, I'd like to talk about chapter six. Chapter six in the Southfield City Charter. Chapter six is entitled Administrative Division. Chapter six states, and I quote, "The administrator shall be required to become a resident of the city of Southfield within six months after appointment for such additional time as shall be determined by the council." Currently, Fred Zorn has been the city administrator for the last four years. Fred lives far, far away in Taylor. This is like Henry Ford driving a Chevrolet. It makes no sense. We need a homie to run this city, not someone from down river with no roots in Southfield. Why doesn't council enforce the charter provision for residency? Or is this just another one of those long-ignored charter provisions of the twentieth century? A time that has come and gone, never to come again. Today residency, that is, chapter six appears to be obsolete and needs to be deleted from or rewritten in the charter. Better yet, the whole charter itself needs to be rewritten from top to bottom like the Michigan Constitution was done back in nineteen sixty-three. For example, chapter seven of the charter entitled Judicial Division is eight and a half pages long and takes up over ten percent of the charter's pages. Sad to say, chapter seven describes a forgotten municipal court system that has long ago been replaced by a state district court system. Yet these eight and a half pages of yesterday's history still linger on in today's charter provisions. Today's charter needs to be modernized from top to bottom. Thank you.
Next person who's gonna add this, Pamela Gerald.
Pamela Gerald, Theo Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number's two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I've been to many ribbon-cutting ceremonies in my thirty-five-year history with the city of Southfield. Many of these ribbon-cutting ceremonies were sponsored by the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. Are some of the city officials of Southfield and some officers of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce biased against small and. of Commerce biased against small and minority businesses? This is why I ask. Last year, the Zoop organization opened up their one-hundredth Zoop franchise location just down the road from where we are now, in the center of it all, our all-American city, that we would expect to be inclusive and welcoming to small and minority businesses. The Zoop franchise owners, Mr. and Mrs. Bryant, are African-American entrepreneurs that are supportive of Southfield and the greater metropolitan area. At their soft opening of the Zoop one-hundredth location, the Bryants donated the revenue from all the sales to the friends of the Southfield Police. That act of kindness demonstrates what a welcome addition the Bryants are to our community. My observation was that the mayor and the president of the Southfield Chamber arrived to the ribbon-cutting ceremony late. In a seemingly disinterested and dismissive manner, the two of them cut the ribbon. In a, in a seemingly perfunctory manner, they took a few pictures, and just like that, it was over. The Zoop management and employees took the time to prepare snacks for the people that participated in the ribbon-cutting ceremony. I was appalled to see how quickly the mayor and the president of the Southfield Chamber left without even sampling the food or mingling with those in attendance. These are my observations. I wonder if it's worth it to be a member of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. I wonder if it's valuable to advertise in the Southfield calendar. I wonder if we can really claim that Southfield is an all-American, inclusive city. And Dan Brightwell, I just wanna let you know, it's not your job to call out to our secretary for the council and ask her, "Did you get that?" She's got a boss sitting right here. So with your corporate American experience, it's not appropriate. And Mr. Fercassi, I love your comments tonight about the art requirement, I wasn't in favor of it, and although we don't agree on a lot of things, you make a lot of wonderful points, and you are Mr. Southfield. The other thing that I wanted to add, when you are something, you don't have to keep saying that you are that.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
The next one, uh, first to be recognized is Ms. Alanda Smith Charles, she's out here. Anything else, Council? Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, um, Mr. City Administrator, uh, did you happen to get my text message about Southbrook, about the deer?
Yeah, the deer, yes.
Uh, for the rest of the council, I was going to Plum Hollow Market yesterday, and the rest of us sat there, and he lives on Southbrook Road, and he said that there's poaching going on, uh, deer poaching going on in the woods behind his house. He and his daughter were walking in the woods, and they found, uh, one carcass of a deer where people had apparently tried to bury it, but feet, a couple of feet of the twos were sticking out of the ground, and in another location, they found part of a deer, plus the hide where they had skinned the deer, and took what they wanted and left the other part of the deer just there. And I think our, uh, animal control personnel ought to go out, take a look, see what's going on, and, uh, that was one of the concerns that he had. The other one was the speeding, cars speeding on Southbrook Road, and he said that, uh, he was almost hit one time when he was walking down the shoulder of the road by cars going by, and he said, the only thing he could see that was a blue car was going so fast, so, uh, and I told him that our police have purchased some of the portable speed signs that maybe that's a location that one, that, one of them ought to be put up. I know they had one on the other side of, of Nine Mile Road, on Burn, yeah, and that's always a surprise when you go over the hill and see, uh, what your speed is, so, those two things. And I did have one other person say, uh, just before deer season, uh, can I do deer hunting on my property? I said, "No, it's the city's own." "What do you mean, I can't?" "Can't just fire, just, you can't discharge firearms, and you can't shoot bone arrows." Like, if you run them down, I guess you can't one. So I'm sure that that's not the only place that that's going on, but he, he runs them by.
Your text was copied verbatim, said to the chief as well, Bob White, and then to sort my copy on to-
I didn't see it, no.
Uh, but it was from text to word.
Okay.
And I do need to follow up on the outcome, because I sent it within a few minutes after receiving.
Okay. Incidentally, I wrote it a lot sooner than they sent it. I sent it at two-thirty this morning, I wrote it, but I forgot to send it.
You're still staying up on that?
Yeah, 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 not on that. Good cheer. That's it.
That's it. Okay, you go ahead. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.